Dublin City Council meeting in May 23rd back to order. I would invite any veterans to please come forward and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Judge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, welcome everybody to Dublin City Council. The first special recognition that we have is something that I had asked the staff to look into and put on our agenda. I would ask Liz Johnson to please step forward. Liz approached me, I was actually coaching a DYA basketball game for my son and we ended up in the same gym and she came forward and we started to talk. And this was last fall, maybe, November, December?
Yes.
I know it was cold out.
Yes.
And we just sort of got to know each other and talking on the sidelines and she had began to, she explained to me the idea of this Alex's Lemonade Stand. And if you could please share with my fellow council members and everyone that's here this evening what Alex's Lemonade Stand is, how it got started and how you got here.
Okay. I'm losing my voice, so I've got my son Tyler here with me. We're gonna see if I can get through, how much of this I can get through.
Welcome Tyler.
Tyler's a very integral part of this too anyway, as well as my other son Tommy. Alex's Lemonade Stand Foundation is the legacy of a young girl by the name of Alexandra Scott in Pennsylvania who had cancer, was diagnosed just before her first birthday. She wanted to do something to give back to the hospitals and the doctors so that they could treat other kids with cancer. She decided to hold a lemonade stand and she did that for a number of years. Unfortunately, in 2004, she passed away at the age of eight. So the stand has been continued by her family. They have created the foundation and they've encouraged others to go ahead and hold stands of their own. June 11th and 12th are the National Lemonade Days and that's when they ask for the stands to please help out. That's what we've done for the last two years. They have raised over a hundred million dollars and they use the money to support grants for childhood cancer research. They support Nationwide Children's Hospital has received grants, OSU has received grants from them. Also, they assist the families of pediatric cancer kids in the travel to and from the hospital and treatment and staying in the hotels and whatever else is necessary. They've received four out of four stars from Charity Navigator and scored 96% for their accountability and transparency and for their financial management. Eighty-eight cents from each dollar donated goes directly to funding the research and the travel. So, we move to, how did ours come about? This is my son Tyler.
How you doing Tyler?
Two years, Tyler's a freshman at Kaufman. Two years ago, we were talking about our summer plans and he was telling me how he really liked to have a real lemonade stand, build one out of wood. In seventh grade, he was 5'11" and 13. I just wasn't sure how many cars were still gonna stop for him at that point, you know? We decided that we would, we would do it. You know, I'm, I, whenever my kids are ambitious enough to do something good, I try my best to see it through. And so I decided that we would do this and we would do it for, for a charity. And so we found Alex's Lemonade Stand. I was impressed with what they did and we decided that we were gonna go forward with it. The first year, the kids built the lemonade stand under my supervision, they painted the lemonade stand. We went out there on Lemonade Days in June. We had James Cotton and Corey Brown helped us out that year to raise some awareness and get some cars in. Nothing like tackling the car out in the street, you know, and bringing it. So, we had 16 kids help out, we sold 100 cups of lemonade. It rained the second day. We raised over a thousand dollars. Very impressed. But what was most impressive was the support that we got from the community. And how many people came up and said, "Oh, this is so great that you're doing this. We'd like to participate, how can we help?" Got the idea that this can be something more than just a charity for Alex's Lemonade Stand Foundation. It can be beneficial to Dublin too. And it can be a way for the kids to get involved in a fun volunteer activity that will, they will be able to gain some leadership skills and some management skills. We took 12 kids that were in the fourth and fifth grade and we had them be our management team last year. They, on the first time that we met, we, they learned who Alex Scott was, they learned who Alex Davis is. Alex Davis is with us tonight, he is a cancer survivor, he is in sixth grade, he's 18 months cancer-free. So we are very glad to have him here and he also is somebody that we can connect to and understand the cause. They did flyers, they did posters, they did, they put flyers on doorsteps. The kids were involved in all facets of getting the stand up and running. Last year, we sold 400 cups of lemonade, we had 30 kids volunteer and we raised $3,405. So that's how we got to where we are today. Lemonade Days are coming up, June 11th and June 12th. And we are going to, we've got a crowd here today, I'm sure all be out there helping me and some others that aren't able to be with us tonight. We've had, in total, 54 kids come through and help. And it's just, volunteering, volunteering is a great thing. Volunteering is, it's a no-cut sport. Volunteering doesn't care if you're athletic, doesn't care if you're artistic, doesn't care if you're academically inclined. Volunteering doesn't care if you're young or you're old, you're male or you're female, you're Democrat, you're Republican. Doesn't care about race, doesn't care about disabilities, it doesn't care about wealth. Volunteering just cares that you care. And if you care and you have a cause that you believe in, you're willing to give of yourself, you can do something. There is something that you can do with your talents to make a difference. And that's what I'm hoping that these kids are taking away is that, we started with an idea of doing a lemonade stand and we've raised almost $5,000 for an organization now from the ground up. And a lot of these kids have been involved from the ground up. Volunteering is also good for the kids. Studies show that they, they get better grades in school, that they're less likely to get involved in drugs and alcohol and cigarettes, that they are more likely to volunteer as adults, that they're more likely to graduate from school, they're less likely to get pregnant. There's a lot of benefits that they have found for kids that are participating in volunteer activities. So why not make it a fun activity that they want to be a part of and show them that volunteering can be a fun thing? So, I get passionate about this, I get passionate about the kids. I love the cause, I think it's great, but for me, it's all of these kids behind me that really are so important to me and seeing that they have this opportunity.
Well, thank you very much Liz, it's a fantastic thing that you do and it isn't just this cause, there are plenty of very worthy causes, which obviously this is. And this council is so committed to encouraging volunteerism and like you said, if you care, you can make a difference.
Yeah.
And that is what really, and the rest of the folks here from Citizen U that graduated this evening, when you sit and you talk to them, it is, it is truly astounding, the level of commitment that people in Dublin have to their, to their fellow citizens.
And if I may say that too, that was, that was another thing about Dublin, is Dublin has been very welcoming for us. The schools have supported us, city council has supported us, has given us nods. You have gone out and helped us get a sponsor this year. We've got, for the first time, we've got somebody who is standing behind us and Sam's Club has been kind enough to donate all the supplies we need, which-
And while we're there, would Vanessa Montello come forward please? Vanessa, come on up. Vanessa's with Sam's Club, right?
Yes.
And Vanessa has agreed to, I asked Liz, "Where do you get all the lemons? Where do you get water? Where do you get all the stuff for the lemonade stand?" She said, "I go to the store and I buy them."
Yes.
And I thought, "There's gotta be something we can do." And Sam's Club stepped up and what is it you're gonna do Vanessa?
We're gonna donate all the supplies for the lemonade stand this year.
Yep.
Okay, right, that's fantastic.
Last, last year lemons were a dollar apiece. That was an incredible generous donation that you are making to us, to cover that for us.
So, just so I understand, this is all fresh squeezed stuff?
Yes.
This is no powdery concentrated stuff?
This is, these kids are hand squeezed, homemade, ice cold, and we might be playing with a little bit of flavor this year, so we've already done a little bit of that already.
And tell us again where it is Liz, everyone in this room I know is gonna acquire class of lemonade, where do they go and when?
We are in, in the Brandon subdivision. We are at the corner of Brandon Way and Wellston Court, which when you're coming from Brand Road is the very first intersection. I just, it's not safe for the kids to be out on that corner of Brandon Way and Brand Road, it's, we have to be back a little ways from the road, so.
When, you will be there throughout the day?
June 11th, June 12th, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM both days, provided that the weather cooperates with us, but probably I'll be under a tent or something, even if everybody else is gone.
Great, and just, there's a proclamation that I have here that I wanna read to you real quick and then I wanna give out a couple of letters to your kids. "Whereas Alex's Lemonade Stand Foundation was established in memory of eight-year-old Alexandra Scott who lost her life to cancer in 2004 and has evolved into a national fundraising campaign to help find a cure for all children with cancer. And whereas in 2014, Dublin resident Elizabeth Johnson helped her son Tyler create his own lemonade stand to raise funds for Alex's Foundation. And whereas Alex's Lemonade Stand on Brandon Way began with 16 kids selling 100 cups of lemonade and raising $1,067, grew in 2015 to more than 30 kids volunteering to sell 400 cups of lemonade and raising $3,405. And whereas throughout the world, Alex's Lemonade Stand Foundation has raised $120 million to fund cutting-edge research for pediatric cancer and support the families of pediatric cancer patients. And whereas Alex's Lemonade Stand on Brandon Way has not only raised money for a good cause, but has also helped our, the youth in our community learn leadership and management skills, compassion and empathy, and has built self-confidence and self-esteem. And whereas on Saturday, June 11th and Sunday, June 12th from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM, the team behind Alex's Lemonade Stand on Brandon Way will be selling lemonade at the corner of Brandon Way Drive and Wellston Court in the Brandon neighborhood of Dublin. Now therefore, I Gregory S. Peterson, Mayor of Dublin, on behalf of Dublin City Council, do hereby proclaim Saturday, June 11th and Sunday, June 12th, 2016 as National Lemonade Days in the city of Dublin and encourage residents to support Alex's Lemonade Stand on Brandon Way."
Thank you.
Now, this may take a minute, but I really think it's important to do in that we pause and we recognize the kids that have volunteered for you. These are youngsters that are, that don't know the people that they're helping, but they know the value of helping and the value of volunteering. Morgan Berry? Kenzie Bickin? Dylan Cook?
Yeah, for us.
Yeah, come on, stay up here.
Morgan and Sophia, come on back up.
This is the most important thing we're gonna do all night long. You Kenzie? How about Dylan? Emma Cook?
Emma Cook is not, she's, she came by herself.
Can you, is that your sister?
That's her sister.
Give that to her. Alex Davis? Austin Davis?
Alex, Alex, Austin.
Is that your brother? Make sure you give that to her.
Alex Davis is our cancer survivor. Peace.
Joey Duffy? Connor Garten? Hannah Garten? You Connor? Jenna Garten? You got the whole family, where's your mom and dad? Are they, are they doing the lemonade stand? Are they here?
And I should say, we do have, we're helping me too, I'm not alone in this.
And guess what the last name is of the next kid? Noah Garten?
There's four of them.
Four of them! Jackson Giles?
Gillis.
Gillis, Tristan Gillis. Emily Harold? Is Tristan here? Emily? Charlie Johnson? Tommy Johnson? Are they all Johnsons? Tyler Johnson?
Tyler, Tommy are mine and Charlie's as much of a nephew as anything.
Charlie, where's Charlie? And there's Tommy. And there's Tyler. Nico Kapustin? Nick?
You guys can go that way.
Mamias? And Zoe Mamias? Give that to your sister for him? Kate Morrow? And Ryan Morrow? Katie Ryerson? And Tom Ryerson? Are there any other?
Should be John Ryerson in there?
Nope, let me check my stack up.
Okay, we've got Brendan and Zimovans, Caroline and next? Kate's not there.
Okay, are you Nick?
This is Tom.
Yes.
Tom, what's Tom's?
Ryerson.
I know, we got one here for him. There's John Ryerson? And then the-
He's got Tom and Kate and then there's Zimovans and Jerry Wang.
There are the Zimovans?
Brendan?
And Jerry Wang.
Caroline?
Did we miss anybody?
That's it.
Okay.
Wow.
Great, here is, yeah, come, everybody come over here. Maybe I could convince my fellow council people to stand up and stand behind you. Tall guys in the back, come on back.
While they're getting their picture taken, I think these guys deserve a standing ovation since we have a lot of people here.
Fantastic, thank you very much, thank you Liz and thank you Vanessa from Sam's Club, thank you very much, we appreciate it. You can have, ah, there's the rush. Here, if we missed any after that, please let me know. Okay, you're good to go? Thank you so much Liz, we'll see you at the, we'll see you at the lemonade stand. Thank you.
I had cancer, thank you very much.
You guys can leave.
Okay, in addition to that wonderful group of kids, tonight we are honoring the 2016 graduates of Citizen U. Citizen U is our citizen university which allows residents to get hands-on, in-depth look at city operations, our financial structure, and most importantly, an opportunity to meet the frontline staff who serve our residents each and every day. This is the second year that we've offered the program, our goal is to provide our residents with a deeper understanding of what it takes to operate local government. Tonight, we have with us 23 of 24 graduates who completed the program this year. I'd like to invite Kyle, where are you Kyle?
Yep, come on up.
You are invited to make a few, your last name is Noak?
Noak.
Noak. Welcome, thank you Kyle.
Can everyone hear me okay? Good to go? All right. Really just wanted to tell you guys thank you for supporting the Citizen U program and how much that I do and I know that all of our classmates appreciate the council's support in allowing it to happen and for us to actually be able to participate in the program. I personally joined it for information. I'm a newer resident here, there's a lot of change that is going on in not just my neighborhood, but all throughout the city of Dublin. So I joined for a self, kind of a selfish reason, that I wanted more information. And I stand here now in front of you guys, knowing that I have a sense of pride for the city of Dublin, for our community, and really the want to do my part and to volunteer and to support the community that we have. And that, I truly believe, is the ultimate goal of Citizen U. And that couldn't be possible without Kyle Kreiler and Christine. I, I don't wanna put your names to them. They're truly, truly amazing. They're absolutely fantastic and the city should be proud of them and proud of what they do for, for not just the services they provide, but for what they do to the, for the citizens. And then also, all the staff we met, not just the department heads, but from every, every employee that took a time out of their day or their job to stay late, to explain their part of the business for us. I wish I could remember all their names and could recognize them all right now. And then finally, to all my classmates, we, we spent eight weeks or seven, seven weeks from six to nine on Thursday nights and to have 23 folks, or 24 folks, pretty dedicated to doing it on a week in and week out basis, and none of our classes were truly boring. Everyone brought something to it and it's really a unique group of individuals. So, it was an excellent experience and I really hope that council supports it moving forward in the future.
Thank you very much Kyle, you know, as, as proud as you are of the city, we up here as representatives of the city are proud of you. And it is really amazing the quality of residents that we have in Dublin that get involved and to go, to do anything, what did you say, eight weeks?
Yes.
Eight weeks, your eighth week to do anything every single week consistently, like that takes a tremendous amount of dedication. I know a lot of people in this group are already involved in the community and we really appreciate that involvement and we encourage you to continue it. So, on behalf of city council, it's, I offer our congratulations and our appreciation to you and I hope you continue to be involved in our community.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, another proclamation, Alan, can you come forward please?
Suit and tie, look at you. No class A uniform tonight, huh?
Well, here, why don't you introduce who you are and tell us why you're standing up here?
Oh, okay.
It'll make this all that more, more meaningful.
Alan Perkins, I'm the former Fire Marshal for Washington Township Fire Department. I started here in August of 1987 and I could probably talk a little bit about what my first day was like, but my first day was actually coming to this building when most of the city services or departments were actually here. The first week I was here, when we think of a lot of developments that we have in Dublin today with the Bridge Park East and Bridge Park West and our Amazon that's out off of 161 Husha Road, it was even really just as strong back in 1987. The first two weeks I was here, we had Dublin Village Center, which was undergoing not only Phase 1, but Phase 2. We completed inspections at AMC Theater, which, you know, we all think of as being here forever, but, you know, 29 years ago, that was doing the final occupancy. We had Scottish Corners Elementary, which we just now seen an addition go on to, which is really neat to see. We had Kaufman High School, which we call the 87 edition, it was a huge addition to the school, and also the stadium. So that kinda gives you a perspective, but also, when we think back of redevelopment, that first two weeks I was here, we built or did inspection at 94 North High, which was a four-story building in historic Dublin. And now, that building has been demolished and we were now seeing a huge project, which we call Bridge Park West, that's there now. So, we have certainly, over the last 29 years, have forged wonderful relationships with, with city staff and the, and the township and that forged relationship is, is a model for many across the state, if not the nation. So, again, I appreciate this recognition tonight.
Absolutely, thank you, it's our pleasure. So, "Whereas Alan Perkins will retire from his position as Fire Marshal for Washington Township on May 20th, 2016 after its distinguished 40-year service career. And whereas as Washington Township's Fire Marshal, Alan managed the Fire Prevention Bureau and the Department's Education Outreach Program and also serves as the township's liaison to the city of Dublin's Building Department, working with building, zoning, engineering officials, contractors and business owners as a plans reviewer, where he was an integral part of the plans review process. And where throughout his career, he has received numerous awards and other forms of recognition, including the Ohio Fire Official of the Year, two distinguished service awards, two Fire Chief Commendations and a Leadership Award. And whereas Alan continues to be an active, continues to be active in several community organizations, including serving on the Live Safe Foundation Board, Uptown Plain, his city historic district design review board, Plain City Historic District Committee and the Heritage Trail Coalition. And whereas Washington Township in Dublin have been very fortunate to have someone like Alan Perkins working tirelessly to help create and carry out the processes and procedures critical to promoting efficiency and excellence in Dublin and in the township. Now therefore, I Gregory S. Peterson, Mayor of the city of Dublin, do hereby proclaim Friday, May 27th, 2016 as Alan Perkins Day in the city of Dublin." Okay, now we do have a special presentation regarding Memorial Day, Monday, May 30th, 2016. I would ask Vice Mayor Reiner to come.
Well, as you know, this coming Monday, the city of Dublin and our nation will pause to reflect on Memorial Day. And I'd like to invite everyone to join us in the solemn ceremony as we remember those veterans who made the ultimate sacrifice in serving this country. On Monday at noon, we will gather at the Grounds of Remembrance in Dublin Veterans Park, where we will be addressed by Master Sergeant Sean Clifton, a Dublin resident and a Green Beret. Sean will share his amazing story and we'll have a video from Good Morning America that
And on this Veterans Day, I wanted to share a story with you that is extremely close to my heart. I first met Sean Clifton and Mark Warner, two elite Delta Force Sergeants, three years ago, in a car on the way to Walter Reed Medical Center, just a chance meeting, and I found their story to be incredible. And I hope their story of courage and friendship will touch you as much as it touched me.
Two American heroes, their friendship born on the battlefield. For Army Sergeant Mark Warner and Sean Clifton, this is a reunion that almost didn't happen. I met with them just steps from the 9/11 memorial to honor the one they were fighting for, when their lives were chained forever.
The Special Forces Unit brought you two together, that's how you met?
Yes.
And wasn't it an immediate friendship?
And we were just always on the same specialty cell within our team and it just worked out perfectly.
We worked together, we'd either train together and just come, just know, you know what the next person's doing.
The elite Green Berets protecting the most dangerous corners of the world. On May 31st, 2009, it was one mission that challenged their faith and sealed their bond.
Now, where were you both on that day?
We were in southeast Afghanistan, Ghazni province.
We targeted Taliban commander and we knew that he was there that day and we rolled out and we ran into Hornet's Nest, really. Around the corner, that's when Sean kicked the door and the guy point-blank just took his AK and shot right up Sean. He was hit, he said, "Help me, I'm helping." Seen his eyes are like just big, "Help, I need help." And then he collapsed down.
Sean, gravely wounded, visions of his wife and sons flashing before him.
I'm just thinking, "Lord, let this be a dream. Just please, Lord, let this be a dream." But, you know, visions of those boys and trying to fight back to, to get back home to them and to my wife, to my family.
Bleeding out, Sean approaches his final breath. That's when Mark, a medic, takes charge, diving through bullets to treat Sean's wounds, convincing a medevac pilot to defy his orders and land inside the firefight.
You know, Mark's obviously my, you know, my hero of the day, as are a lot of the guys on the team.
There's a higher power definitely that day that was looking out for us as much firepower as on the battlefield that day and the wounds that Sean had.
The mission over, Sean's personal battle just beginning. Over 20 surgeries in five months. His room at Walter Reed Medical Center, the new foxhole.
You know, in our minds, we think we're these big bad Green Berets and to being, to the point where I can't even sit up in my bed under my own power, that was a pretty humbling experience.
From Mark's courage in action, Sean finding his strength. His long road to recovery, ending at a marathon finish line.
I took the next nine months plus and went from kicking the walker away to dropping the cane and walking and jogging and then October 2010, I finished that marathon. That was a big deal.
Same, old theory, never quit. That's a old saying, even from day one selection, never quit.
It wasn't just for me, these guys risked their lives, so, you know, the best thing I can do is, is get back up on my feet and then that's, that's my thank you back to them.
And so, on this Veterans Day, we salute Sean and Mark, brothers in battle, who like all our veterans, have taught us so much about what friendship and courage and resilience really mean.
Well, as you can see, as you just witnessed, Sean is an amazing individual and you'll have a chance to hear from him on Monday, but better than that, Sean is in this crowd tonight and he's a graduate of Citizen U, so Sean, stand up, be recognized. Well, following the ceremony, on behalf of the Dublin City Council and the City of Dublin, I'd like to invite everyone to join us for a complimentary picnic on the grounds of the Dublin Library. We hope our residents will join us so that they may come together as a community to pay tribute to our nation's heroes, and I'd like to acknowledge a special guest with us tonight, Jeff Noble, the Commander of the Wesley G. David's American Legion Post 800. Each year, Jeff helps coordinate our salute to veterans on Veterans Day and our Memorial Day services. Jeff, would you like to share your plans for Memorial Day with us, please, stand at the podium?
The veterans of VFW Post 10691 and American Legion Post 800 have committed to Memorial Day and Veterans Day every year in Dublin for many years. This year, we'll start the parade as usual up on Dale Drive, but the other end of Dale Drive from where we used to be, and march to the bridge and have a ceremony on the bridge, go into Dublin Cemetery, and have a ceremony in the cemetery where we honor the fallen who reside there. And then we'll get the folks over to the Grounds of Remembrance for Sean's talk. We'll have some speakers in the cemetery, including Al Troutman, who's a warrant officer with the 187th of the Ohio National Guard and just finished his second tour in Iraq. So we hope you will all join us, bring your friends. If you're a veteran, come walk with us, we'd love to have you. In fact, I can get you a card for the VFW or the American Legion. So, thanks.
Hey, thank you, Jeff, and you know, and thanks again for the team at 800, for doing this two times a year and being the backbone of this thing to honor our veterans. I hope everybody will join us for the Monday ceremony. I find it always very touching and very moving, so thank you.
Give them a second, I guess everybody's gonna clear, you want to give them just a second to clear out the room? Thank you, everybody, for coming this evening.
Warren, I would've figured you'd teach that class.
I couldn't believe it, Warren hadn't been through that already. Okay, Dana Plowin ahead, update on the Ohio University Master Plan?
Yeah, I think Vince is gonna make an introduction and then you'll present.
Thank you, good evening. City staff have been working with Ohio University the last couple of months on the initial steps of their master planning process for the Dublin campus, and it's been a very exciting conversation tonight. Shawna Boland, who's the chief planner for the university, is here to just provide a brief overview of the process, and as council knows, on June 20th, as part of a workshop, we'll be diving into a lot more detail in terms of where that planning process is heading and what the potential is of the campus. And as you'll learn, particularly on June 20th, the city will benefit greatly from what will be an incredible economic engine for the future of Dublin. So with that, I'll invite Shawna up to do her presentation.
Thank you, everyone. We're really pleased to be in the City of Dublin. It's been a collaborative and wonderful process with the city staff as we have embarked upon this campus adventure, and I have a lot of slides here, I'm not going to go over in detail on a lot of them, but I would encourage you in what you might have more detail on to look at prior to the June 20th, the meeting that we have. So I'm gonna review with you a little bit of why we're in Dublin, a little bit about the sense of place and the kind of community that we'd like to set up for the Dublin campus, share with you the beginnings of a framework plan that we're currently refining, and then follow-up with next steps. So as you know, in 2012, we acquired property in the City of Dublin to begin and establish our new Heritage College of Medicine in Dublin. We entered into an economic development agreement that would allow us to acquire additional acreage around that original 15 acres, and we've acquired SubArea 1, which is the original 15 plus what the City of Dublin has given to us. We will acquire SubArea 2 when this master plan is complete, and SubArea 3 will be jointly developed with the city in this process. A framework plan that we are imagining will help guide the phase transformation of the campus. It's really providing a long-term view while also allowing us to implement our near-term projects, and we're really looking at a plan that will help us integrate wonderfully into the campus community. And as I said earlier, we're really pleased to be here and have been very welcomed by your team. Ohio for Ohio is a strategic vision that our leadership has been working on, so we're just getting ready, we're just in the process of updating the master plan, because leadership wanted to start with a vision, and a vision that complements Ohio University's innovation strategy. We have a Keystone location in Athens, Ohio, but as we think about our statewide presence and our ability to leverage resources and locations, Dublin plays an integral part to that. Our innovation strategy sets forth to build bridges between industry and government and academia, and we think that Dublin campus and this location provides us with that opportunity to do so. So we're a campus within an innovation district, economic advancement zone, and you have already have, you already have a district vision with the West Innovation District that was established prior to Ohio University coming here, but when we looked at some of the principles that you had set, you had put forth in your West Innovation District, we recognized that it quite, it complemented our campus goals quite well for what we had envisioned. And so how do we begin to think about the opportunity here in Dublin for Ohio University and our physical presence? First, we set Dublin guiding principles, so as we think about the opportunity, we will look back at these guiding principles and make sure that those opportunities complement this vision, and we envision high-impact initiatives and programs that are, that complement your city and as well as central Ohio. We want to advance our Ohio for Ohio and strategy and strengthen our regional partnerships. We want to have innovative programs, things that don't exist in the city of Columbus as well as with Ohio University, and things that we can't do in Athens, Ohio itself. So with that in mind, we were ready to begin in the framework plan, and we set forth this staging plan with several workshops. The city staff have been complementing our steering and advisory committee at every workshop step that we've had along the way. We set forth goals and principles, began to develop some concepts, and we're currently together refining scenarios to meet the city's goals as well as Ohio University's. On the Ohio University side, we have a steering committee that's comprised of executive leadership as well as an advisory committee that represents every college that we have on the campus, very academic-focused. Our consultant is AR St. Gross, who are based out of Baltimore, Maryland, as well as Washington, DC, and the City of Dublin is an integral part of our process as well as other partnership, partners that we have on the campus and anticipate having on the campus. So what are we up to with the framework plan and what does it look like? One of the things that we had to develop is a sense of place. We like to envision this as innovation district as a knowledge community, which is a blend of university and ideas and commercial and practice integrated together. If you are familiar with the old Research Park places that started comprising, being developed in the 70s, they're more in suburban areas, dull and flexible and not a lot of mixed-use environments. Today, as people think about innovation districts, they're thinking about a more of an urban environment, more pedestrian-friendly, and really trying to integrate and anchor like a university with business practice to build upon one another. Elements that help support a great innovation district include the ability to have flexible space, having great streets and public spaces, making it pedestrian-friendly, access to parking and transit, as well as a mix of uses that would complement the academic and partnership programs such as housing, retail, and others that will make a 24/7 lively environment. These are some examples of those kinds of environments that we envision, so on the first floor, there may be retail venues like coffee shops that would complement and be a place where businesses and academic units could come together and merge and create ideas and grow outside of the formal environment. On the right is a green space that integrates both of those. You can imagine housing on the top floor, you can imagine academic and research space in the middle. Other examples, and some of them you may have been to or are quite familiar with, those that shop, the Green and Dayton, Ohio, you may have been there, and then a university setting that introduces this kind of environment as well. We developed a series of physical planning principles that really tried to merge those sense of place, and this is important before we could develop a framework plan, so that we understood what kind of environment that we wanted to have. So, a community, walkable, a mix of uses, fostering innovation, and all the things that you see in yellow are things that we help, we think will help support that environment. And this was key so that we knew what kind of environment. Were we picking up Athens and placing it in Dublin? No, not with this kind of vision, so something quite different. So taking a step back and looking at where the City of Dublin is within the Columbus region, and the yellow dot is the West Innovation District of which our campus is within, we started looking at its relationship to the city, and we took a deeper dive into your city and looked at the placement of the West Innovation District in conjunction with Bridge Park District, and it's really the west side of Dublin version of Bridge Park, and one of the things that we heard from the city when we met with them is the academic version of Bridge Park, if you will. The existing campus has four buildings on it, the three that were the Heritage College as well as a new building that was recently developed, and a lot of surface parking lots. Some of our initial planning concepts included looking at two different ways to make up the campus. One way would be to place a main street through the campus that would allow for slow-moving vehicles and allow that mix of uses to be vibrant within the community. Another would close off the campus a bit and ring the campus with a road and make it a little bit less accessible for the community. And if we met with 99, 100 people, 99 out of 100 preferred the main street concept, and we were asked to explore that a little bit more, but began thinking about a ring road or another exit point so that we didn't lose the opportunity to go around the campus as well. The other thing that we have been doing is working with O'Brien Atkins, who the city is working with on the West Innovation District plan overall, so that we are merging and making sure that our plans are integrated as we both think and come together, and that's been a fantastic effort as well. So I'm just gonna go through a few slides that share with you some of the things that we think about for the campus and that we are refining with the city and that we'll be speaking with you to, on June 20th about. One is our street network, so what kind of streets do we have, how big are they, how many lanes are they, and how pedestrian-friendly are they, and how do we think about the cross points between those as we move forward? A great campus has open space, and Ohio University is famous for our open spaces, we're rewarded with it often nationally, and one of the things, if we're not picking up Athens and Georgian architecture and placing it in Dublin, which we are not, how do we bring Athens or the thought of Ohio University to this area? And one way is through our green space. So this has been important to our campus and thinking about that network through the campus. Another is thinking about the development parcels and where buildings could be placed, and this is just sharing a little bit about that, and we are refining these and just highlighting that these are different areas of study within our framework plan. Another is the building frontages, so thinking about the urban network and the street environment and where those buildings are in relationship to the road and pedestrian accessways. Another key piece for Ohio University is visibility and views, being able to see in that green space, seeing within the, seeing within the campus at any point that you may be. So the yellow zones are sharing with you at major intersections that the city has planned, and then the yellow arrows are views into the campus from both interior streets as well as from the exterior. And then parking is key. To have the capacity at the campus that we are anticipating will require a strategic strategy for the parking situation. We couldn't have as many buildings that are placed on this map if we didn't start to introduce parking structures, and so thinking about that and how many spaces per people on the campus is something that we're working through. And then in the end, the plan will come together in an illustrative plan similar to this that will be used as a framework as we think about the projects that we move forward. And so, I'm gonna transition briefly to some of the programmatic themes of what would come on the campus, really as we hear the different ideas that people have been contemplating, they really fell within these seven programmatic themes. A lot, one big theme is health and wellness, obviously with the Heritage College, that's one, but our College of Health Sciences and Professions, which are strong in physical therapy, and our College of Education and Recreation can bring something to this campus that would complement the area. We also, you're a great partner to us as well as Ohio Health and other partners, and Columbus State is as well as an academic partner, so there are different opportunities there. And then there's new opportunities and programs that complement Ohio, as I suggested earlier, that we have been contemplating, and this is a work in progress and something that we'll continue to develop and understand. So, taking those opportunities and thinking about how they fall in the site, we're working with the city to understand where the best fit for those may be and how we meet some of the goals within the West Innovation District that is set, and then thinking about the nodes of activity, and this diagram is showing some of the first views of development that we might anticipate, and really trying to build out the north end of the site, as you can see on the slide here. Flexible phasing is something that's key, because if something really fits within another area of the plan, as long as the road network structure is here, we believe that the existing development in orange can be built around in either the blue or the red and even the green as we think about the development, and complement that with the types of uses in the, that I shared with you earlier. Another thing we're working on are urban guidelines. I'm not gonna go through all of these, but we want to make sure that the things that we put on the campus work for the campus environment but also complement the West Innovation District, and so we'll be detailing those in our planning effort. And our next steps are workshop with you in June to dive into these at a deeper level. We are meeting with our Board of Trustees and having an interactive engagement with them at the end of June. We have been meeting with our college stakeholders, we are planning a workshop, a public workshop on the campus for the City of Dublin to hear their ideas and share what we are doing. We are working with various projects that really want to move forward now and understand their impact on the framework plan and when we may move that forward, and with all of that feedback that we gather from those workshops as well as with the different projects we have going on, we will refine our preferred approach, develop the urban guidelines, and document it and ask for its approval from our Board of Trustees. Once we gain that approval from the Board of Trustees, I'm not gonna go through all of these dates, but we will work to go through the city's approval process in conjunction with the West Innovation District Plan's approval process. So that's my overview. I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Shawna, and we will, Dana, will we just get in more depth, and that was sort of a 30,000-foot view at the June 20th workshop in this chamber?
That's exactly what it was. I want to thank Shawna Boland and Ohio University for all the effort they put into the master planning process. You know, they've gone and done a significant master plan for all those dots that are Ohio University throughout the state of Ohio and then drilling down on the Dublin campus specifically, and what you're seeing is a glimpse into their thought process. I think, you know, what I would say is, you know, when we sought to attract a university anchor tenant in the West Innovation District, Ohio University has been an exceptional partner. I want to echo and thank Shawna for her words for us, but it's feelings mutual, and I think that their vision and the extent to which they want to create a presence here has far exceeded our expectation in terms of the depth and breadth and the cooperation they do with the other universities in the area and how they find their niche, and I want to thank them for going to North Carolina with us recently to Research Triangle Park and University of North Carolina's Centennial Campus, which we benchmarked off of clear back in 2005, and then when Steve Golding, then Vice President of Finance and more recently Director of Strategic...
Strategic Initiative.
Strategery. Director of Strategic Partnerships and Chief Operating Officer for the Dublin Campus now is his, is his. I think that sends a message to Dublin as to the effort and the focus that Ohio University's putting on this, number one, but secondly, when Steve came up to me a few months ago and said, "Hey, have you ever heard of Centennial Campus?", I said, "Well, in fact, we have." So, it was just kind of interesting that they on their own kind of came up with that interesting parallel as we did several years ago, so very excited about the opportunity, excited for the dialogue that can happen on June 20th, so.
Well, it's just been fantastic to watch not only their presence out there in the West Innovation District, but things like Tantrum Theater and the program at the schools and really becoming part of the Dublin community, it's really exciting.
Yep, great point.
So we look forward to seeing, will you be back on the tour? Will you be back on the tour?
I will.
Great, we look forward to seeing you then. Thank you, Shawna.
Thank you.
Good to see you again. Well, the only other thing I wanted to point out, too, is it was important that we at least get the 30,000-foot level, as you put it, because this is an iterative process, and they're also trying to keep their board advised as they go down this road. So, it's important that, given two public bodies that we're, you know, making sure that we're kind of coordinating how and timing of which they're having to go to their board and approvals that have to go through our processes. And so, there was a lot of whiteboarding going on about the calendar that you saw in your presentation.
Thank you, thank you very much, Dana. Citizen comments, we have three people that signed in, and I want to poll those three people. It's Terry Albanese, Linda Rudy, and Michael Carroll. Are you all here to testify about the development down in the historic district? Where are the three hands of the people who signed up? Are the three of you all going to testify on that issue? Great. Dana, could we get just sort of an idea of where that process is, what we've gone through?
One is not.
Oh, you are not?
One in the back is not, right here.
Oh, you are not? Okay, well, we might as well on the other two, then. Could you just give us sort of an idea of where that process is?
Yeah, I'll ask Vince Papcidero, Director Planning, to just give an overview of that process and where it's at.
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you, yes. And we're going to show a flow chart just to sort of help summarize the development approval process in historic Dublin under the Bridge Street District Code in just a second. In a nutshell, though, the proposal for Biddy's property has been reviewed in a very conceptual way by the ART and is scheduled for tomorrow evening with the ARB, again for conceptual review. This flow chart summarizes the process specific to the historic district when somebody wants to develop a piece of ground. And you can tell there are multiple steps, beginning from a pre-application process through basic plan review, site plan and development plan, and finally into building permitting. This typically takes, as shown on the bottom, an example, eight months before you can get to your building permit stage. Where we are right now on this proposal is to the left of the slide, in a very informal step of review. We have an application, but there's no substance to it because we felt as staff that this proposal needed to be reviewed by the ARB in particular before it became a more formal application. So, that's where we're at at the moment. And staff met at the ART just a couple of weeks ago and saw a very preliminary site plan, very conceptual, hand-drawn architecture, and gave feedback to the applicant in terms of scale, site layout, things of that nature. And in fact, staff recommended that the applicant reach out to the neighborhood, meet with the neighbors before the ARB process so that he could share with them the general concept at this point in time, get some feedback, and go to the ARB, get additional feedback, and then finalize an application if they're getting a sense that there'll be support at the ARB. So, in a nutshell, that's where it stands today. And for those who are interested, the flow chart's on the website, so if you go to the Architectural Review Board page, you can download this if you're interested in this process.
Fantastic, thank you very much, Vince. The visual is very helpful to understand where we are.
Great, thank you.
Okay, and with that, we will start Terry Albanese, who maybe isn't here to talk about the historic district development.
Hi. I feel like I'm on Shark Tank.
And what are you handing us?
Thank you.
I don't know. Going to have to. Thank you.
My name is Terry Albanese, and our offices are 37 West Bridge Street. And I'm here tonight to inform you of something new that we're bringing to historic Dublin, and that's the Dublin Mercado. Mercado is Italian for market, and it's similar to a farmer's market. It'll be open-air, all Italian-inspired. Everything is locally sourced. The cheese is coming from a family in northern Ohio that makes their cheese their traditional Italian way. We have charcuterie in Parma, all kinds of different produce grown by local farmers, infused honey by local honeybees. They don't infuse it, but they make it. So, everything will be locally sourced. It is open-air. It will be held Thursday evenings from 4:00 to 7:00, and Saturday mornings from 10:00 to 2:00. The opening, grand opening, is June 4th, and it is weather permitting. It's open-air, it is weather permitting. So, the website was to be live today, and last time I checked, it still wasn't, so won't be any later than tomorrow. And you can register on the website to get updates if the weather's permitting or not and just to get more information about the farmers that will be bringing in, the producers will be bringing in. So, everything will be locally sourced, however, the wine will be from Italy. So, we just couldn't budge on that one. So, we'd love to have you all, you know, come join us and just give us your feedback. This is new to Dublin, obviously, so we're anxious to get feedback and to see you.
Fantastic, thank you very much, welcome.
You're welcome.
Lucky to have you.
Were there any questions?
Does anybody have any questions?
Great.
I don't think so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Linda Rudy? Linda Rudy? Go ahead, ma'am, if you could just state your name and your address, please, for the running.
Linda Rudy, 129 South Riverview Street.
Welcome.
Yeah, I'm here to read a letter regarding the proposed infill development in the historic district, sort of in general, but also, you know, it's the Biddy's development that kind of sparked this letter. Dear Mayor, Council, and Staff of the City of Dublin, residents of the south end of the historic district have coexisted well for decades with the business mix on South High Street, which is mostly quiet day use. With the implementation of the Bridge Street corridor vision, we have wondered whether that would change. With the proposed infill development behind the former location of Biddy's Coach House, 76 and 82 South High Street, these worries are now potential realities. The proposed structure, which presents a monolithic three-and-a-half-story elevation along Blacksmith Lane, includes structured parking, 6,500 square feet of office space, and four condominium units. We understand that it was deemed acceptable by the city's administrative review team. That was our understanding, and that it would be reviewed by the Architectural Review Board this week. While we intend to attend that meeting, we want to place these concerns before council directly as well. Success of the Bridge Street corridor vision, even its intent on urbanization, is not contingent on such high-density uses within the historic district itself. However, so far, Dublin is not keeping to the promised light touch in the historic district. Our specific concerns include the height and overall density of proposed development. On its own, it is excessive, given surrounding uses. Developments of this type would destroy the scale and character of the historic district, especially since each successive project tends to exceed previous development height and mass, and you can only destroy the scale and character once. It would set a precedent that, under the community entertainment district uses, would have a significant negative impact on successful neighborhoods bordering the CED. Another concern is traffic on Blacksmith Lane, increased traffic on South Riverview Street. Right now, it's unsafe for kids at lunch and rush hour. Emergency vehicle access, a recent fire truck dry run illustrated this difficulty, and dumpster access. We also note that all residential areas bordering South High Street properties, indeed, all of the Scioto West CED are successful and primarily comprised of single-family owner-occupied homes with young children throughout. These areas will be significantly negatively impacted by high-density uses and large footprint liquor establishments on their borders. If the city wants bars adjacent to residential property in very successful neighborhoods with many young children, that would be a very serious concern. No one we have talked with has problems with Biddy's scale operations, though even that dumpster odor was noticeable from residential backyards. But it is not hard to imagine how a number of larger establishments could disrupt the balance that has existed in the district. There is evidently a large demand for the type of lower-density residences that would be a better fit between commercial property and bordering neighborhoods despite the current prohibition of such in the historic core district. Why bring these concerns to city council? City council action would be required to allow and encourage these lower-density developments that preserve the district's scale and character, as well as the balance of commercial and residential uses that has existed for decades. Based on the first historic Dublin leadership meeting, it is with optimism that we request the city council and staff consider defining what the city means by preservation of the historic district, adjusting code for the historic core district to ensure integration with adjacent residential areas, i.e. to limit density bordering the successful neighborhoods of South Riverview Street, South Franklin Street, and Waterford Village, and clarifying permitted uses, given the large number of liquor permits sought for the district south of State Route 161 and under the CED. We appreciate the opportunity to communicate our concerns to the city. Sincerely concerned citizens. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rudy. Why don't we hear from Mr. Carroll and then any council comments that there may be on the issue after we hear from him? Michael Carroll?
I'm going to take a shot here and guess that I'm the only one using your bike pass to get here?
You're the only one who can tell.
But, okay. My name is Michael Carroll, and I live at 190 South High Street. And I want to make a proposal that I'm impressed with the city council, your earnestness, your recognition of very good works. But I think that the historic district where I live, we'd be better served by being independent of the council. Based on what I read, three of you live in Mirfield Village. I always know when I get to Mirfield Village because they're the ones with the bike pass that say, "Mirfield Village, residents only." So, you're in a difficult position of trying to imagine what it's like for us to be impacted while you go back to your very secluded homes. So, I would suggest that what you do is consider having the historic district that's left, and there's not much left, but there is, south of Bridge Street, and have it an independent district with its independent council determining what it wants to do. Because frankly, Linda Rudy, who's my neighbor, put it very politely, but we feel like we're just getting ram-rodded. We're trying to prevent something from happening. City council, the entire city, is on the other side pushing. And if you look at where Biddy's is, for example, that, the east side of South High Street, all those businesses are very small businesses on very large lots. So, I just read an interesting book, and there's a theorem called the Law of Very Large Numbers. I won't get into the details because I can't explain it, but in a nutshell, it says, if something can happen, over time, it will happen. So, that entire corridor will eventually be turned into very large buildings filling those entire very large lots, which will back up against the streets. You know, and a side note, just to show you the impact, I used to complain about the speed of the drivers on South High Street because I actually have to pull out. And my own example was fifteen percent of the, nobody did 25. The starting speed limit was 35. Fifteen percent of the people were doing over 45 miles an hour. The city's solution to that so far has created enough construction where now people don't speed, they're just backed up in front of my house, both going north and south. So, while everyone else complains about the traffic in downtown Dublin, I can't even get out of my own house anymore. So, again, I propose that we become an independent district, and of course, any independent government needs, all governments need money. How will we do that? I would propose that we take city council, take the part of the property taxes that are devoted to the Dublin Arts Council for anything in the new development area and devote it to preserving and restoring the historic district. That way, you have a brand-new project that you're building out there, you're taking money from that to preserve historic Dublin, rather than to have something that looks like east and north with kind of an historic Dublin sign on top of it. So, that's my proposal. I don't think there's any solution to this, other than you put it back in charge of the residents. The community's gotten too big, there's too much pressure to develop. I had a laugh when I read Dispatch was, "One of the last undeveloped lots in Dublin becomes available," and the article was, "We're going to develop it." I was thinking, what a nice opportunity not to develop something, Biddy's, which, by the way, is actually a national historic register. Again, it'll be turned into a facade with a plaque on it, but it's not going to be historic. So, I think it would be a good idea to develop a plan to make that part of historic Dublin independent, with its residents in charge of its future, because we're the ones who have to bear the brunt of it. And as nice as you are, as hard as you all work, it's like Linda Rudy and Steve Rudy and I, maybe Bill and Vicky Esterly, saying, "Well, here's what we think should happen in Mirfield Village." I'm sure you'd be kind of surprised at what ideas we might come up with, since we don't live there either. And that's sort of the same way, frankly, we feel about you. Not that you're not good people and stuff, but just like the cancer victims you had, the heroic military people, I can sympathize with them, I can empathize with them. I absolutely have no clue what they actually went through. I would never have the arrogance to say I know what they went through, not even close. It's just part of human nature. So, either you all move down and enjoy the increased traffic, the noise, the pounding day and night, the big new orange sign saying it's all detours, all historic buildings being confiscated and being built into something that was never intended, all the green space being gone. And by the way, why don't you raise a couple of nice, twenty young girls like the Rudy's are doing? And let me go back and give an example of the frustration. When the Rudy's were trying to improve on their Mazda garage or house on South Riverview, the ARB, one, Dublin was against it. They didn't want the garage attached because the garage doors might face the street. And two, their addition was, if you looked from the street, the original roof line was like this, the addition might be that high above it. It passed the ARB three to two, on a very, very close vote, obviously. Now, the ARB is considering building a four-and-a-half-story building right behind them. So, in two years, the ARB has gone from, gee, I don't know, that roof line looks a little off, to, well, what do you know, four-and-a-half-story building looks about right.
Mr. Carroll, see that red light that's flashing? It's been flashing for a little while. You get five minutes, and it's only fair if everybody sort of gets all that. So, if you could maybe try to wrap up, if you want to have some conclusion.
Sure, just your little guy says 2:27.
Well, that's because you're over by two minutes and 27 seconds.
All right, very good. Well, that's my proposal that you set up. Since you seem, Dublin loves studies, study an independent district solely under its own control with the monies from, taxes from all the new building that is disrupting our neighborhood and that we have to pay for. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate you coming in, and thank you for your comments. Does council have any comments? I guess the only comment I would make, Ms. Rudy, more to direct it at what you had said, you know, that landowners and developers and people have rights, and it's important that we go through a process. And it's important that we, and what I really like about the diagram that Vince put together is it shows, it visually represents where the process goes and where we are now, which is still all the way over here. Okay. What you had just mentioned that staff had approved it, and What you had just mentioned, that staff had approved it, and we haven't even gotten to the, I guess that's what I'm saying. It hasn't even gotten to the point where there's been anything to be approved. And it certainly hasn't gone through ARB, and it certainly hasn't been presented here to council in any kind of comprehensive way. So we are, I believe, that this council is very committed to the historic district and preserving it the way that it is, not making it a new version of old. We don't want to do that. We want to preserve what we have, because once it's lost, it's lost forever, and we get that. I think that this council's been pretty committed to that endeavor. So, you know, it is important that we stick to the process and do things in the appropriate and the, following the appropriate procedures. Is anybody, Chris?
I have a question for Vince. Vince, do we notice informal reviews for ART?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. Yes, we do.
And you all received notice of the informal review for the ART review?
On the web.
On the web?
Yes.
Okay. What I mean notice, I mean send a notice, like we would. Okay. I just didn't know if we did or not. I read through the meeting minutes and realized that there wasn't any citizens present, and I didn't really think that was probably reflective of their level of interest, so.
And I would add that the ARB meetings, of course, are noticed.
Sure. I knew that. But I was just, will you notice, is there any ART meeting that is noticed?
In the West Innovation District, those actions by code are noticed when those cases are considered. In Bridge Street District, the code does not provide for ART notification of cases.
I think that would be a good thing to make note of when we, when we do our review of the code, of, you know, being that we really want people to participate early and often. In order to do so, we might need to add some notice clauses to the, to the code for that. I think it would be appropriate.
There's nothing that precludes us from doing that in any event in this circumstance. We could certainly notice the residents down in historic, and I would suggest that we do that.
Particularly, yeah. Probably even if we're not required to, as a matter of course, it would be, certainly be a good idea to do.
Sure.
Thank you.
John?
I'd also add that we have had some construction in that area, but some of that is due in large part to the bike path, the connectivity, trying to provide that connectivity throughout the city for bike riders. And it's been a challenge over there from a construction perspective, from really even gathering the rideaways that we needed. But it's underway, and Dana, I know we're getting close on that, but that will help alleviate some of that issue.
Obviously, the roundabout also, the roundabout construction and the 270 interchange construction has impacted traffic in the historic district quite a lot, and we knew that would happen, and it's thankfully coming to a close this fall. Last week, Wednesday, there was a meeting convened by Dana, talking about the historic district sort of holistically, because there are so many stakeholders groups. There are residents, there's the Historic Dublin Business Association, there's the restaurants, there's the Arts Council, there's the Convention and Visitors Bureau. I know I'm forgetting people, but in any case, the idea, and I'm really supportive of Dana's efforts, and I will put the, put the plate on, in front of him, because I think it's, it's his initiative, and I'm really grateful. We had a good meeting. It was, it was, I, no council was invited. I happened to find out about it. I had a conversation with Rick Gerber. He said, hey, we're having this meeting. And I said, you know, it'd be great, I'll just stop by. I have a meeting every other night last week, so I'll just pop in. Husband was out of town, it worked out perfectly. Anyway, what we talked about during the meeting was, there was a whole host of things brought up, but one thing that, that Rick Gerber brought up, and we started talking about, and it started, you know, I think to gather some steam, is the idea of an overlay district in the historic part of historic Dublin. And to talk about the buildings and talk about the environment and talk about how it is that we are going to develop, because if you look at the Bridge Street vision, we did talk about the light touch for the historic area and how important that is, because we recognized the character that we want to preserve. And so I think we do, as a council and as a community, need to focus on that, on that part of our town and how it is that we preserve that character. And so I don't know what that looks like going forward, but as I said, you know, Dana, it's on his list of things to do. I'd invite you to, to comment further if you'd like, but it is something that we don't want to let get away from us.
Well, the purpose of that meeting, as Amy alluded to, was, and I had mentioned this, I think, to council a while back, that we were looking at pulling together the various leadership members of the historic district, of the various voices down there, be it residents, businesses, the library, the Arts Council, and so many others. And there are others we identified at the meeting that we needed to add, so we'll add those too. Donna is going to be our, our primary point of contact, because we had a lot of staff involved in a lot of different things, and then we have a lot of different folks, you know, doing a lot of things down there. So we're trying to bring everybody in the room with kind of, not one voice, but all the voices into a room, and so we can communicate effectively back to everyone and have better coordination on operational matters, hear concerns, talk about things like this. And so I thought it was a great meeting. And yes, one of the, I think, one of the key, there was a laundry list of things, which we'll be happy to share with you in your next council packet that came out of that meeting, one of them of which, one thing that got the most dialogue was the notion of an overlay district, not a succession, but an overlay district over the, that area that is south of 161 in the historic district. I think it is a, I think it's a great idea in the sense that it certainly provides direction to people who have a desire to either preserve, or build, or reconstruct, or do something different as to the parameters of what they could do or couldn't do. And I think that's, given the Bridge Street District code, there's things that are, you know, could happen under that. So maybe, so staff's going to take a look at that and report back on, on what some of those ideas might be. I think we've got to get into things like parking coordination, and, I mean, there's just so many issues that we're, that we want to talk about and address down there, and many things that we are working on and have worked on. So we'll continue that meeting. I think we're, Donna, you're going to do that? Is it monthly?
Yeah, it's a meeting's monthly, not monthly. We're working at, at, under the monthly.
So the initial part of this is to do that monthly. Now, as we said to the residents, we'll meet as often or as little as you want, but we're going to start out monthly, see where that takes us. So anyway, that's.
This is really, there really hasn't been a tremendous amount of activity down there with respect to this. This is really one of our first go, go-arounds.
I really think south of, personally, this is Dana's opinion, I think this horse got a little bit of, this cart got a little bit ahead of the horse. I think we generally would have pushed hard for a proposed development to have more time with residents, even as it was coming into the informal concept. I think this kind of got a little bit out of sequence there, and would have preferred more dialogue about that with the residents before it got in something that felt more like a formal process. That way, we could have had that feedback. But I want to emphasize, though, on staff's behalf, that it was, it's an informal concept, which is process, which was introduced within recent years at P&amp;Z and ARB, so that a developer can come in and test the waters and get feedback. So the fact that our residents are opining about it and letting people know how they feel is a great thing, and earlier is better. And I think that this is most appropriate to do that, and certainly, as, as the informal concept comes to ARB even tomorrow night or whenever it is, to be heard there as well. So this is all good, and that's, that's how we put the process.
I think south of 161 that an overlay would be really appropriate, and I'd encourage all of us and staff to.
I think, too, there's been a lot of rumor, conjecture, optioning, all kinds of things going on south of 161, many things of which have never come to fruition, or people started and backed out and caused rumors. And so, you know, this is, to your point, Councilmember Keenan, this is probably one of the first things that actually got this far in legs, south of 161, and now we're getting the opportunity to hear how people would respond to that, so.
Dana, do you have any idea how long it would take to get the overlay district in place?
I have, right now, I have no idea. I have to get back on that.
Okay.
We're looking at it in light of the other things that we have. I mean, obviously, it's important. I don't want that to sound like we're going to delay that, but we've got to look at that and give you a realistic timeframe.
The other thing, too, I think with this particular development, Business First picked up, and, you know, we don't have any control over what Business First publishes. If it makes any of you in the historic district feel any better, that's the first I heard of it. I'm looking at that going, whoa, that seems like that's, they're talking about this thing. I didn't, never even knew this was happening, and I'm on city council, so what's going on? And it turns out, you know, they're coming in to just pitch an idea, the very earliest stages, and the Business First article sort of made it sound like we're almost ready.
Made it sound a lot more baked than it was, and.
Makes it sound a lot more baked, yeah.
That came to a surprise to us as well. We didn't expect the article. But nonetheless, it's, it's a public process, and these things are going to happen, which is.
To finish my previous thought, I really want to make sure that we're clear to the residents, and we're clear to the development community as well. That I don't, you know, I'd like us to take up that task sooner rather than later. I know there's a lot on the plate. But I just think, to be fair to all parties involved, I, it is my recollection that we had a very clear vision of what would happen in terms of the light touch with South High Street, and I don't know that that vision got captured holistically by the code. So, thank you.
Okay. John?
Yeah, I just want to say that, first, I want to thank you for coming in in your bicycle clothes. We spent millions of dollars building bicycle trails out here, and it'd be great if you were all sitting out there in your bicycle clothes, and so were we, actually. But I just got, just to comment back, yeah, there's no pressure for development by this body, and I don't think there ever was to develop anything in this town. I know four of us sitting here are, we're on playing and zoning, and certainly, it's not, and this poor attorney's sitting up here in the front row, he knows the game, and there's no real pressure ever to develop anything here, or do we ever feel that pressure that, hey, we got to build something? We just, it's just the opposite. We're trying to preserve the community, just to be, to be fair. And then, and then, and I just got to end this myth, because we do hear this. You mentioned the bicycle trails in Muirfield and the sign there, and I just got to explain to you why that signs there. There's a really old-fashioned, forty-year-old bicycle trails, and if anybody else rides on them, other than the residents that live there, they're not insured, okay? And that's why the signs there. Muirfield Homeowners Association and the citizens of Muirfield would love to turn those bicycle trails over to the city. They'd have to widen them, bring them into compliance for federal standards, build new bridges, and it'd cost millions and millions and millions of dollars for that to happen. So, and then I just think you should be aware of the fact that probably, I don't know, ten, fifteen years ago, we did an analysis of your area, and there was a thousand parking spaces down there. And the analysis really was pretty much to examine the area under a microscope. Some of you may remember the sewer going in under Blacksmith Alley, and the city's interest in cleaning up the area and putting in parking, landscaping, and lighting. I got to tell you, after about a year or two of chairing that committee, that we found out the homeowners, mostly the business people that own the businesses, were really not that interested in seeing this done. But so, we have been looking at that area for a long time, and there's a great interest in preservation of that area. So, and you may not even have been aware of that, but I think my colleagues and I are all very interested, from what you heard tonight, about seeing that, that, you know, the historic district is preserved. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any council members that request any of the items to be removed? There are seven items. Take your time, it's okay, we're waiting for Chris.
Can you read the resolution numbers? I'm sorry, I have them down, my resolution number.
Resolution, well, ordinance 2316.
I got it.
What's the topic you're looking for?
Thirty-one sixteen. I just have a comment.
Thirty-one sixteen is the AEP Construction of Overhead Underground Relocation Project?
Yes.
Okay. We will remove thirty-one sixteen and place it on the regular agenda. Are there any other items that we would like to remove? Hearing none other than that one, I make a motion to approve the actions for these six items listed on the consent agenda. Is there a second?
A second.
Ann?
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Amaro's Grooms?
Yes.
Nice patience tonight.
All right, now, if we moved.
What I have is just a typo. I don't need a.
Okay, but, well, then, let's just do that right now.
Don't need to come off for that, I don't think, in the future, but.
Well, we are where we are.
Yep.
Resolution thirty-one sixteen.
I just have a question with regards to the letter of agreement. The first page, B, said the city requested AEP Ohio lower the overhead electric facilities to underground facilities. Is, is there a typo in there? Is it to lower, or?
It's to lower overhead electric facilities into or to, to underground facilities. So I think it's okay the way it's written, but.
If you feel good about it, to me, it was, it was a little unclear.
Yeah, we were asking them to go underground.
That's another way to put it.
If legal's comfortable with it, I am. In reading it, it was a little bit unclear, but.
We can include a two in that section B to make sure that it's clear.
Thank you. It's all I had.
Okay, let's just be very clear. Ann, could you read resolution thirty-one sixteen, please?
Sure. A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a letter of agreement with Ohio Power Company for the design and construction of an AEP overhead to underground relocation project in conjunction with the Crosby Court Business Park Project.
And so now, Jennifer, do you know what the issue is? Do we get that?
Right. We're including the word "two" in the first sentence of subsection B under the background information on the letter agreement. I think that's clear.
Thank you, appreciate that.
With that clarification.
Ms. Salee? Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Amaro's Grooms?
Yes.
And Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
All right, so that gets us through the consent agenda and that first item on the agenda. Now, under the postponed items, is there any member of council that objects to moving up resolution thirty-three sixteen, the Avery Road widening funding up on the agenda in order to address it in conjunction with resolution twenty-six sixteen, Tuttle Crossing Boulevard Extension funding, as the two items are related? The votes on the resolution will be done separately, however, if there is no objection, we will have staff address them in conjunction. Is there any objection?
No.
Megan?
Good evening, members of council. Staff introduced resolution twenty-six dash sixteen at the last council meeting, and council requested additional information regarding the proposed alignment, any buffering opportunities, an update on recent development activities, and the status of the Riggins Road Connection Project, et cetera. All of this information was gathered and is provided in your packet this evening, and we hope that may have answered many of the questions that you may have. This project is several years from construction, which is currently planned to begin in the spring of 2019. There's still a lot of work to be done in terms of design, land acquisition, public involvement, environmental, and then bidding of the construction project. And what that means is we will be returning to council several times in the future, seeking additional actions to proceed with this project. In the meantime, we believe that it's important for Dublin to retain this significant funding award, since the Tuttle Crossing Boulevard Extension continues to be a planned improvement for Dublin, as it may not be possible to re-secure the funds if we were to give up the funds, because the process to secure these funds is quite competitive. Once an agency receives an award, MORPSY's routine process is to check in with the local government agency every couple of years to ensure that the agency is still pursuing that project, and it is a viable project. Main reason that they do that is they need to monitor the funds that are, that go through MORPSY, and then also, it helps them plan. And if a community were to abandon a project, then obviously, that frees up additional funding that other communities could go after. So that's what this resolution is accomplishing. Regarding resolution thirty-three dash sixteen, the Avery Road Widening Project picks up at the northern terminus of the Tuttle Crossing Boulevard Extension Project, and it widens Avery Road north to a continuous four-lane roadway section up to Warner Temple. We have determined that this project is another excellent candidate, as it does have a regional impact, so we believe it's a good candidate for the attributable funding as well. So we're seeking authorization to apply for such funding for that project. So the plan, schedule-wise, is we would initiate the Tuttle Crossing Extension Project in 2019, and then follow up and begin the Avery Road Widening in 2020, and both of those projects are currently shown in the. thousand and twenty and both of those projects are currently shown in the CIP. We will continue to collaborate with Columbus to influence access and adjacent land uses in the area. And I do have Vince here, Paul here, as well as Jeannie Willis, who's the project manager for both projects. She's done a great job. It's a lot of work to comply with all the federal hoops, so they're able to answer any questions you may have and we recommend approval of both resolutions.
Any question or comment on either resolution from council?
I just appreciate all the information that you gathered. The report was really well-written and very, very thorough, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, it was a team effort.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, I just wanted to comment, if you go back to the minutes of August eleventh, two thousand and fourteen, page seventeen and nineteen in that packet, there's discussion about a lot of big backs, big box development in the Columbus area of Avery, given the type of development that we definitely needed to give this extension a lot of careful consideration. After those comments, Mr., Ms. Grigsby noted in regard to the driving range on Avery that there have been proposals for big box retail and Columbus has not approved these. Their preference is not to have big box retail and they believe having the road extended provides better reasons for it to develop commercially than with retail use. Well, I'd sure like to know or have somebody weigh in on that one more time, because that's two, almost two years old and hopefully that's the same kind of scenario that we could expect as we go forward with this.
I believe Vince had to leave, but Jeannie's been root, kept, keeping track of all of the developments along Avery Road, so she'll be able to speak to that.
And I saw the packet and that was very helpful, but...
Good, great, I'm glad that it was. Yes, and it's a very good point about the development in Columbus and their development patterns. Within the last two years, in fact, Columbus has looked at their development patterns, really in the suburban area, on their suburban edges, and they have looked to reduce their density and that traditional development pattern that they have extended into the suburbs. They're refocusing their efforts down into the CBD, their Central Business District, and looking at a more blending type of development along their suburban edges. And their new, what is the title of the new gentleman, the gentleman who started working in our, the, the...
Mike Shadak.
You're talking about Mike Shadak, who's the deputy, deputy director of development, works for Mayor Ginter as a, as the liaison to suburban community.
And so, his job is to work with the surrounding communities so that we get these more harmonious types of development.
Just as an example, I can't tell you how disappointed I was at Cos Gray and Hayden Run when they put a center Giant Eagle there, but more importantly, they put a car wash right on the corner. I mean, that kind of development is not something I think anybody here wants to see and I, they ruined the character of that, that whole area out there, in my view.
Absolutely, we agree with you and Columbus has been fantastic to work with regarding the development in this corridor. They have engaged Dublin at every opportunity, every development proposal that has come in. They have worked with us, they have actually reduced their densities, particularly down on the White Farms proposal, as highlighted in the memo that we provided. So Columbus is really working very, are very hard to change that development pattern and to be more harmonious with the suburbs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's, that's terrific news.
It is wonderful news.
Um, I will, I'm naturally skeptical based on the history.
Fair enough.
And so, I'm wondering, I noticed that a number of the developments were called out by name, as if there had been plans submitted. I think it might make us feel better if we could maybe see those plans. I mean, I don't want to hold this up, but going forward, you know, maybe in a, in a future informational packet, if we could get some more detail about the plans...
Sure.
I would certainly, you know, make me feel better and then also what their timelines are in terms of, of making those developments reality. Are they dependent on Tuttle Crossing, not dependent on Tuttle Crossing? You know, something that is slightly better as we, there is that stretch where Tuttle Crossing borders Columbus.
Yes.
And then, as we go to the west, it's all within Dublin on the north and south, correct?
Correct.
Okay. But yeah, I'd like that, more information about what the proposals are.
As they become available, the, all of the status. So the mixed use development that, on the twenty-seven acres, that's no longer going forward. We do not have more detailed information on the Bosant, or I'm sorry, on the two, the driving range and the two bowling alley pieces to the north, but as that information becomes available, we can certainly share it.
No, I'm, I'm really shocked too to hear that, because, you know, I've seen zonings where we've had as many as eight units to the acre on our borders.
Yes.
And no real infrastructure improvements, so they're all gonna use our streets, our roads. So, I, I'm thrilled if this is what's really happening.
I believe that it is. The other very good piece of info, good news that I have to share with council is that for Avery Road to the south of Tuttle Crossing, where we tie back into existing, or I'm sorry, existing Avery Road, the city of Columbus is also submitting an attributable funds application to be able to widen Avery Road to a four lane footprint to match ours, to help carry that traffic, so the burden isn't just on Dublin. They are trying very hard to be great regional partners. It's wonderful news.
Well, this will be the first in my seventeen, eighteen years of sitting here, so I, I'm thrilled if that's what's really happening.
Well, the one, one thing I would emphasize is that I, I think what's incumbent upon us is to engage Columbus and the other communities within the Hayden Run Corridor to ensure that that plan keeps it, you know, keeps with its intent. We've monitored their applications going in, we've sent letters, you may recall, even going back a couple of years ago...
Absolutely.
Sent, sent letters to their zoning commission and to the mayor's office on, on various projects that were under consideration. I have every intention of staff keeping that engagement up. I think the introduction of Mike Shadak to the staff, I've already met with him and having that dialogue, you know, we have members on our staff who are former Columbus staff members at cabinet level and sub-cabinet level, so I think we've got relationships down there to, to keep that up. But I think it's a team sport relative to Dublin, Hilliard, the townships and city of Columbus working together, so we need to make sure that that's, that's how we're, we're looking at this, so.
Anyone else? Anne, twenty-six sixteen?
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Amaro's Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Anne, thirty-three sixteen?
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Amaro's Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
And Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Second reading public hearing, ordinance twenty-one sixteen, Anne?
Authorizing the city manager to execute an easement along Post Road with American Electric Power for installation of electric facilities for the street lighting along I-270.
Megan?
Good evening again. There are no changes to this ordinance from the first reading. This ten foot easement's necessary for the undergrounding of existing overhead AEP lines to provide service for the new two seventy thirty-three interchange lighting. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions and we recommend approval of this ordinance.
Questions from council?
I just have one question. I, I know we've talked about thirty-three corridor and fiber and things of that nature. Do we have any need for conduit to, to go into this area? Is that something that we typically look at at this point in time?
Actually, on that, that particular stretch, we already have conduit in that post-road area right through there. In fact, it even was built into the bridge when the bridge was designed and constructed over two seventy.
Great, thanks, that was my only question.
In ODOT typically, when they do a medium barrier wall, they'll put extra conduit in that wall that goes down the middle of the road too, so...
I just didn't know if we had rights to any of it, so glad to know that we do, thank you.
Honestly, you built it into the bridge, Dan?
Well, I'm talking about the post-road bridge itself. So that stretch where they're bearing it, there's conduit back when Dublink was being built, that bridge was being reconstructed, so they put additional conduit into the bridge as it was constructed to accommodate the, the fiber optic.
Brilliant, brilliant. Any other questions?
Ms. Salee? I'm sorry, Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Amaro's Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-two dash sixteen, Anne?
Adopting the proposed tax budget for fiscal year two thousand and seventeen.
Mr. Smith?
Good evening, members of council. Approval of ordinance twenty-two sixteen permits staff to file the two thousand and seventeen tax budget with both the Delaware and Franklin County Budget Commissions. As discussed in the May ninth council meeting, approval of this ordinance will provide access to Dublin's portion of local government funds. Section fifty-seven oh five two eight of the Ohio revised code requires adoption of this item by July fifteenth and submission to the auditor's offices by July twentieth. The presented budget displays actual revenues and expenditure data from two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and fifteen, projected revenue and expenditures for two thousand and sixteen, which are based upon the currently approved CIP and operating budgets and preliminary estimates for two thousand and seventeen. These two thousand and seventeen estimates are derived both from a one percent growth factor over two thousand and sixteen and incorporation of the two thousand and seventeen projects programmed as part of the two thousand and sixteen through two thousand and twenty CIP. As discussed previously with council, the two thousand and seventeen numbers are preliminary in nature. Full development for two thousand and seventeen occurs through both the CIP and operating budget processes. In the main meeting, council requested clarification as to the passage of the one point two mil police levy. This levy was authorized by voters on November third, nineteen eighty-one, to be effective in nineteen eighty-two. In the preceding years, levies were approved by the voters at a range, at a rate ranging from one point two mils to two mils. However, each of these approvals were for limited periods of time, required renewals at the time of expiration. Given the continuing nature of the levies approved by the voters in nineteen eighty-one, there is no further action required of the city to maintain this levy. Finally, the follow-up memo included in your packets provides additional details regarding major expenditures, which make up the two thousand and sixteen contractual services category in both community environment and general government functions. With that, I'm happy to address any additional questions you have.
Questions from council? I'm sorry, were you done?
Yes, I'm done, thank you.
Questions from council, comments?
I, I just had a quick one. So first of all, I appreciate the additional detail in here, it's really helpful. Under the IT one, there's a projected difference of about a million dollars. I really only saw the one reason regarding outsourced printers. Is that the bulk of that difference? I mean, don't get me wrong, I'm truly for outsourced printers. Over the long haul, it saves a lot of money, but I'm, I'm struggling with that, that's a million dollar difference.
No, so I think there were, with regard to IT, there were more items other than just, you know, the, the printers themselves. You know, they're getting into some other citywide communication items, phone cellular equipment, mobile computing for police, so there are items that were programmed. The, the attempt at the printers was a, attempted cost savings.
Yeah.
Buying printers, yeah, sure, lease them, have a maintenance plan and go with those.
One thing I would emphasize too is, is remember, this is our best estimate...
Oh, yeah.
Looking way forward. I do know that in the area of information technology, as our CIO Doug McAuliffe has, has come into the new role, there's, I would anticipate some change in technology and emphasis in, in some areas, so we're probably, we are estimating roughly what that might be, but in no way ready to get into the details of what that might be. That'll come up in the operating budget probably.
Yeah, no, I get all of that. I'm very fine and very comfortable with all of that and I, it just felt like everything else had a little bit more detail and then it was sort of like this blob of, oh, it's printing. That's why, it was maybe the way it's written, but that, that was why. It just sort of made it seem like that chunk of that money was all...
Yeah, and that was, and I would be the first one to suggest that's, that's rough estimating in anticipation of what, what might happen, but...
No worries, but that was, you can see why that was my question, it's like that can't be the whole chunk of money, so, and that's fine.
That's correct.
I, I just have one comment to make about, again, about the parkland acquisition fund and I, I don't have necessarily a problem with moving to the point three five percent, but I would really like to see us get back to, you know, historically where we were with our parkland acquisition funds of being point nine five and one point seven five. I'd like to see us move that needle up a little bit, because I think as our population grows, we're gonna have greater parkland needs, particularly with all of the development going on and want to make sure that we have adequate funds to provide that.
But that's a restricted fund, right?
Very restricted.
Yes.
It's only for that use. How much have we spent and where did the money come from for a lot of this riverfront property? It didn't come out of parkland.
No, that's significantly coming out of...
I mean, it's millions, millions and millions, right?
Right, now, general, yeah, that's coming out of other sources.
That's, that's a, a policy decision that council has made over the years, so that's something that will, you know, if we want to take it up, a budget time.
Take that up in the budget process.
Yeah, that would...
That's simply why I was stating at this point.
I appreciate the heads up on that and something we'll be prepared to talk about when the CIP budget comes up.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yeah?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Ms. Amaro's Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-two dash sixteen, Anne?
Adopting the Sioda Riverside Park Master Plan.
I'll introduce it. Matt?
Good evening, members of council. Tonight before you, in, in resolution thirty-two sixteen is the adopting of the Sioda Riverside Park Master Plan. And before I get into the specifics of a presentation for the master plan itself, I want to just point out that the park has not been formally named, it's been referred to by several different names, one of which is on the screen and others internally with just some of the geographic location of the existing proposed park. So I've got two things for you this evening. One is to present to you the master plan and then the second component of that is to talk about the naming, the formal naming of the park as to the policy that exists today. You'll recall back in two thousand and thirteen, there's been an extensive amount of work done on the planning process for this park that originated in the framework process for Bridge Park and Bridge Street Development Area. After that meeting, there's been several opportunities for us to engage with the public, working with our lead consultant, with MKSK, towards the more finite details of the plan. A lot of staff work has been taken into consideration on this project as well through touring this master plan, proposed master plan throughout the city at various community events and public work sessions, leading up to just this past March, the final opportunity for the public to weigh in on, at least a formal opportunity to weigh in on the existing components of the park and then the council workshop that took place back in April. The park, just in an overall concept, for those who haven't seen this map, the northern direction is to your right, not to the top. Just to the, the, the long nature of this park, it's easier to depict it in this manner. But you'll notice on this screen where there are certain key elements within this park that are included in the master plan itself, the first three phases of the, first three items of, of the biggest significance are the, I'm sorry, this isn't on... The first three components of the park that I want to highlight are the number one, two and three, and unfortunately, they're not numbered correctly on the, on the left-hand legend, but they include the two plazas that connect to the pedestrian bridge. Those two plazas are needing to be worked in conjunction with the design of the actual bridge itself, which is currently under design. So those two plazas are key components in this master plan that are gonna be towards the forefront of any, any future development if the, if the plan is approved this evening. The fourth component is basically the green area, the lawn area on the east side of the eastern plaza. Then we've got a series of pathways throughout both sides of the park, on both sides of the river, that you'll give river access and overlook areas. And then there's another area within the western side of the park, which is, has very unique natural features, which is the Indian Run Corridor, which will lead all the way down to the river itself at the confluence. And then, we have input and output for cutin'hoos and kayaks on the west side and potentially on the east side with some overlooks, overlooking the cliffs down to the river as well. And then finally, as John Shields Parkway comes into the, the near future, potentially, there is a plaza area that will connect with that area as well for the pedestrian tunnel underneath Riverside Drive into that parkland. Just to give you a couple of conceptual visions of what those amenities look like, the pedestrian the pedestrian bridge, just from a look from the river, looking westward towards the new natural areas of, of the west side of the river. And then just a couple of views, or this view's actually walking on the bridge itself, looking westward. On the east side, the plaza connecting the bridge, this is a view just north of the plaza, looking southward towards the bridge up to your, to the right of the screen. And then the skating rink in the forefront there is one of the items that came up in our conversations with the public and internally with staff. One of the things that we're challenged with, with a park of this magnitude and this much of an investment is trying to maximize its use 12 months out of the year. And you can imagine, without having some kind of a popular winter, winter outdoor activity, that we wouldn't get the full use out of the park if we were to put something in there of this nature. This skate ice rink could also be a patio in the summertime, converted over to an ice rink in the wintertime, which would house all kinds of different programmatic opportunities with potential concerts or recreational activities and gatherings. The plaza off to the south is, or I'm sorry, the shelter-like structure off to the south would be the public restroom area plus the covered gathering space. Here's a better architectural visual of what that shelter is conceptually being looked at today. This is looking westward, or eastward, towards the actual Bridge Park Development, where the bridge connects with the plaza area. This would be the lawn space area along Riverside Drive on the east side. This is just south of John Shields Parkway, which is looking south towards the plaza area with the lawn space there. You'll notice the wall that is coming down from the Riverside Drive elevation. There's a substantial slope currently from east to the west towards the cliff area, the river, that this wall would help bring that slope down to a more manageable and more usable space. This is the west plaza, looking eastward across the bridge. This plaza is going to be a, a confluence of pedestrian traffic that will gain access to the eastern side of the river. But there are also private developments on both sides of this plaza, which will offer seating areas and things for restaurants, et cetera. This is an example of the west side, near the Indian Run Corridor, where trail systems will be put in to give people some access to some of the most unique features around the area. This really captures some of the natural beauty and gives people that access that they really don't even have today. A lot of people don't know a lot of these areas even exist in Dublin. And then finally, again, on the west side, this is an example of some of the pathway systems through the natural area along the river to provide a substantial walkway system. So without getting too far ahead of ourselves, there is obviously a realistic cost associated with the development of such a park. Off to the right-hand side, you can see some of the probable costs associated with this type of, of the vision with the master plan. It, it's a summation of about $44 million, to which staff will be working diligently between now and our capital improvement program workshop to put together a financial framework and some phasing framework for your consideration, to consider how we would go about funding this, this park. By adopting the master plan, I think it's important to note what that really means. It really only means that it facilitates the city's ability to better advance the design of the key phase, the first phase in the improvement, which are the plazas at both ends. I think one of the key things that we need to realize is, if we are constructing a pedestrian bridge, we need to make sure that the bridge actually connects to something so that we can actually use the bridge and provide it for a public amenity. The other thing the master plan will do, it'll inform some of our future capital planning decisions and the future phasing of all of the projects associated with the park. It also establishes a financial framework and planning framework for future projects, future project phasing of capital program can properly be considered with other competing elements without, throughout the city. This isn't the only project the city's putting forward, so we understand that. It instructs staff to propose some amendments to the Dublin Community Plan and the Parks and Recreation Master Plan to reflect some of the geographic areas depicted within this particular park master plan. Currently, the community plan does not show the existing geographic areas as Parkland, so we would need to adjust the community plan to reflect that. We're not asking for that to be approved this evening. Or are we going to present that this evening? We'll take that into consideration. Plan has been finalized and adopted, and then we will bring that forward for, for formal approval. Think it's also important to note that the master plan itself, by approving it, does not limit the ability for the city to amend the park plan. As the, as Dublin begins to implement these improvements, things will evolve and ideas will continue to arise as we work down the path of understanding the details of the work. So with that, at this point, staff is recommending and requesting the approval of the master plan. We have Darren Meyer here from MKSK, who is our lead consultant on the plan. So he or I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, where did the $20 million number come from on the pedestrian bridge?
Where did the $20 million number come from?
Can you go back to the slide? I kind of missed it. Because in my thing, there's just dashes there. Oh, yeah, there, see?
The $20 million came in at, was it last year's CIP? We had a preliminary cost at 19 million, and then, then it was updated this year to 20 million. So this is what will be.
Is this based on additional progress that's been made on the design? Because I seem to recall a conversation that we had that we weren't going to get like a good number on it until we got about 50% through design.
Right.
So I was just sort of curious as to where we were with that.
A lot of that has to do a lot with the design aspect of the bridge, for sure.
So are we at that 50% design mark?
We are not at the 50% mark. I think we're close to the 30% mark, which will give us a little bit closer ballpark.
The budgeted number for the pedestrian bridge is at the $20 million number. We are at the 30% design level, and we will be talking about that in more detail at the upcoming council workshop on June 20th.
So, she was, Megan was going to say. Okay, so this will be a topic of conversation specifically about the pedestrian bridge there?
Well, what we will do at the workshop is give you an update on the, council had asked for an update on the bridge as it was going through. We said the best place to check in is at the 30% level. We are there.
Gotcha.
Which is why we, in the, in the packet, we gave you a, an updated version of the council workshop agenda.
Yeah.
Which would include the pedestrian bridge, because we did hit that 30% design.
So the other thing is, is the river access, is there just one river access point?
Actually, if you look at the southwestern side of the, the park itself, there is access underneath Bridge Street there at Dublin Springs.
Oh, okay.
So there's one there. Then at the number seven on the west side, just where the confluence of Indian Run and the Saito meet, there's another river access at that point there. And I'll, I'll just say there, the pathway system, as we're looking at it right now, it will, in all likelihood, provide very close proximity to the river's edge for some of the, some of the informal walking areas that won't be hard surface. And then on the east side, we have access, a potential access point at the number seven on the east side, which is an overlook. And we're looking at opportunities for us to provide, you know, walkways down to the water itself.
Okay, yeah, that was my, I wasn't sure if that was like just an overlook or if that was also potentially, I'm just curious, because I was like, oh, one might not be enough to accommodate for all of the.
Well, on the east side, there's not a lot of access, period, because of the amount of.
Cliff face?
Cliff face.
Yeah, well, the topography makes it really difficult.
When you get up north, under the 270 Bridge, where we recently completed the park improvement there, is where you can get access down to the river.
Okay.
It's very gradually sloped there.
So it'll be one new point of access, for sure, and possibly a second.
Possibly two, maybe three. Just north of John Shields Parkway Bridge, we're looking at the opportunity for some rock climbing activities, which will also have an access point down to the river to get onto the, the cliff face, the outcroppings there.
I have a couple of questions about this retaining wall. I seem to recall when the golf club in Dublin was being built, there's a retaining wall behind that clubhouse. And there was a lot of discussion about having to put a railing system on the top side of the wall, because it was greater than 18 inches. This appears to be 36 inches or, or so from the drawings. Wouldn't it require a railing on the top side of that?
Yes, in my opinion, as it was depicted in the picture, it would require some kind of a safety railing so that people weren't accidentally walking off of the ledge there. And a lot of those details, as we discussed in the workshop, points well taken that, you know, some of these pedestrian access points, particularly along the wall face there and then along the cliff face as well, any walking systems or potential access that people have, we need to make sure that we put into safety precautions necessary, which would come as part of the detailed plan.
Can you tell me about how many square feet the, or thousand square feet the green is?
Off the top of my head, no. Darren, do you have that answer?
Is it an acre? Is it two acres? Is it 10 acres? Four to five acres of. And that's really our only expected green space of size in the park?
Of size in the park, yes.
Well, there's lots of green space down below, on the other side, walking pathways and so forth. But it's not open, usable.
Not lawn space.
Yeah, not, not lawn space versus lots of.
What would be active space versus passive space?
Right, that would be the, the, the primary only location, yes.
You know, Matthew and Savannah, they recovered one of the, one of the squares that they had a parking garage on. They tore it down, they put the garage underneath. And then they built kind of like the area of restrooms and an area for the public on one side. And the square area, they have the dancing water. It gets huge amount of use, and I know that's probably not something we want to do. But it was, if you're doing plumbing and water for an ice skating rink, it could potentially be both of those, maybe not all of it, because you may want some square, you want space area patio to cover. But it gets heavily used down there, a lot of activity. So just a, just an idea.
Good, thank you.
What, what is this vote going to make you be able to do moving forward that you would not be able to do otherwise? I just, I have a tremendous amount of hesitation on.
Yeah, I, I think, what we're looking for is a confirmation of conception, of a master plan framework. This gives us guidance on key components. Obviously, there's more detail to be worked out as you go forward in the finite planning process. But as you adopt, going back to our workshop that we had previously, where we discussed this in quite a bit of detail, this is giving the, the sort of the general framework for a master plan. We'll refine that on an ongoing basis, as Matt pointed out in some of his bullet points. You know, these things are always subject to change as you go forward. Implementation of this is subject to affordability as you go through your capital improvement project process. But I think some of this with the bridge itself, obviously, is budgeted. The plazas will go in and tie in as part of the construction so that we're not going back and tearing stuff up later. So all of that starts to tie in. You'll see some significant components fairly early on and then rolling out other activities and programmatic aspects of the park as you go forward in your budget process. But the key is, are we headed in the right direction? These are the major components and layout of the park, per the public input and feedback that we've gotten. And then obviously incorporating your thoughts over time with this.
What, what is our mode for public input moving forward? I, I think it's very different when you go for public input for a $44 million park versus a park.
Well, our next, our next step would be to bring forward to city council for consideration our phasing expect, or our phasing recommendation and then the potential funding that's associated with that for council's feedback. Once it goes from there, it would go through the review process, the public review process, as any other project we have.
And what this starts to do is really lay out the key, heavy infrastructure components that make that park work. I guess that's another way I would look at that. So these are key findings of what makes a park like this, a park like this. When you get into the more programmatic aspects, like a climbing wall or other, is it going to be a, a skate park versus, and/or a water park or something? Those types of things will continually come back, either as review, public input, and/or through the CIP process, all of which have public input along the way. So, you know, you have public hearings, you have input to the budgeting process and so forth. So there's many, many check-in points as this thing unfolds. No different than we've done with Coffin Park, Avery. These very large parks that we have that unfold over the years, there are many check-ins. And oh, by the way, you might get three, four years down the road and go, oh, boy, maybe we ought to go back and think about, rethink this piece of it. And so we've had that happen with Coffin Parks taken, as an example, taken on many different looks over the years. I don't, I don't know if any, that's, that's my view of the, the overall master concept.
I guess my struggle is just the magnitude of scale. You know, when we redo something in many of our existing parks, the price tag is significantly different than, you know, we, I don't, I don't know what our most expensive park in the city is.
I would say not close to this. We could go back and look at that. But, you know, again, these are, these are, sometimes you don't do things until a certain time in the life cycle of the city, because they're in the too-hard column. This is one that was in the hard column. You, if you go back and look at decades of councils past, as I remind people, assembling the green space along the river. Now that it's there, now, after decades of effort on that, now you're at the point of rolling out a park with these major components and accenting and, and working off of some of the other things that are going on around it. So, but, but these key, I mean, these are not small price tags, and these are key pieces that make the thing work, so.
I think it's, it's important to be mindful, and, you know, you can agree or disagree with all the concepts of Bridge Street, Bridge Park, this grand, beautiful, iconic park, which is what it's going to be. This is going to be the centerpiece. You know, when I think back on my years of council, you know, what I'm most proud of, this is going to be, you know, probably in the top two, because this is going to be the piece that's going to define the community. And, you know, council made a decision a number of years ago. We want a park in the riverside, we want to assemble the land, we want to have a pedestrian bridge connecting east to west. I mean, this is the, the centerpiece of the grand vision that, you know, is the Bridge Street. We talked about the River Corridor and, and how, you know, where should we start? And we talked about the River Corridor. And now we're at the point where, you know, we're, we're looking, we're seeing the glimpses of the vision becoming a reality. And I, you know, I mean, how many, how many public meetings did you have, Matt? You had them up there at six or eight?
Yeah, and then we also had it posted on the website and displays in the recreation center.
For months and months, it's been on the website.
The state of the city addresses, the last two.
And, you know, I mean, i- is it expensive? Yes, it's, it's a very expensive, very ambitious plan, but it's also planned for. And when you look at our capital budget laid out, you know, the next five years, and then, you know, there are, you know, we have planned. And, you know, we talked about, you know, when a family saves their money for a while because they're planning a big vacation or they're planning for their child's college education, we held back on some things to preserve capital budget money and debt capacity so that we would be able to realize this vision. And as I said, now we're, we're, you know, standing at the, at the edge, looking at, at the realization of the vision. And I think it's going to be spectacular.
So how far are we out on knowing really what the earliest for the bridge? Or are we?
I, I believe, I, well, restate that one more time, make sure I heard that right.
So in the CIP, we have a budget of $20 million for the bridge. The last numbers that we saw, I think, said 18 million. The, the last more concrete or formal numbers were 18 million. When will we know that your bridge is going to cost X?
So the workshop, our director of public works is saying it. So the workshop, our Director of Public Works is saying at the workshop, we'll have significant confidence level of what those costs, how those costs are shaping up? Fair statement? Yeah?
For me, and I don't know where everyone sits, I kind of need to know that number before I can vote on the master plan. I just, I don't know if we can table it.
I mean, the bridge is budgeted, and it's under design and moving forward unless council wants to revisit the pedestrian bridge, and whether they're going to fund that or not. But, I mean, the, of the one thing in this master plan that's there, it's the pedestrian bridge, it's funded, it's on its way, it's at the thirty percent design. Obviously, council can choose to not do that at any point along the way.
Staff was directed at the last budget meeting last year to put it back in.
Well, it was always in, we had...
Well, you moved it out five years or two.
No, we moved it out one year, and then we moved it back.
Nevertheless, we did have, we had to move back where we thought it was going to be, so.
Well, I'm very...
And can you explain why?
I'm very supportive of the park, and I'm very supportive of doing things there, but it is very difficult to vote on something that you...
No, you don't have to. I mean, that's certainly your call. If I, go ahead.
Well, I was just trying to clarify the difference between what's budgeted, infrastructure-wise, versus the master plan is also, I mean, the bridge is budgeted, it's in the CIP, it's budgeted to be under construction, our intent is to have it under construction, it'll be under construction by this time next year, early next year.
We're paying for design right now.
Right, so I just want to differentiate between that process and the framework process.
I get it, it's just hard, you know, until you, I guess I'm hopeful that it comes in within the budget.
I would never, I would never promise, let me say this, I'll be real clear on this, I think council's heard me say this one before, I will never promise you a project is going to be at or below or above budget till the bid comes in. We will design it to a hundred percent. When we bid it, we'll see what it's going to cost. If, in our design process, in our estimating for design process, it goes above or beyond what we anticipate or what we estimate for that cost, we'll certainly make you aware of that along the way. If, from our own design perspective and what we're being told by the experts who are doing the design and constantly comparing that design against our estimates, if it starts to get awry on us, we'll make you aware of that first time we know that. But sometimes, we don't even know that until we get into the bid process. So there's, there can be intricacies in constructability and that sort of thing, although constructability and so forth is part of the, the design process, so.
I guess I just wanted to, if I may?
Sure, Tim, go ahead, please.
I just wanted to state that my understanding is I'm voting on a concept, a conceptual master plan, and frankly, including those numbers. You know, I, I think the numbers are closer to the mark with respect to the pedestrian bridge, you know, but as I look at that list, and I appreciate, you know, getting these, you know, ballpark numbers, you know, but until we get more detail, you know, this vote tonight, I don't believe, for example, you know, I'm not holding staff or anyone else to a three-point-seven million dollar figure for the John Shields Parkway Plaza. I mean, I'll see it when I see it, you know, when we get the details and so forth, and I'll have an opportunity to yea or nay, you know, at that point in time, and offer my input, and I don't, I don't know that any of us knows, you know, what that will look like when we get more detail. So that's, that's my understanding. Having said that, I want to be clear that, to the extent it's not already evident, I'm wholly in support of the pedestrian bridge and the east and west plazas. Thanks.
So to me, what we're really voting on are sort of the keystone pieces to this overall project, right? Understanding that these are some ballpark numbers, knowing that we're going to be intimately involved with the process as it goes forward.
Correct.
So, yeah, I get the trepidation when we don't have some, some numbers, but I'm also trying to keep in perspective what we're actually voting on tonight, and that's really those key stone pieces to the project, right?
That's correct.
So I do have one other question about what we're voting on. This might seem a little silly, but it's also asked for guidance on whether we want to do a kids' vote versus the public naming procedure? So I don't know how we vote, I mean, I don't know how it goes in the same document.
Yeah, I think you would, you would vote on the resolution regarding the, the master plan itself, and then you would, we would ask your guidance on how you want to go through the framing process separately from that.
Okay, that, I was, I was just confused, that was just a logistical...
And just the other thing to point out, too, and when we talk about this, point well made about the numbers, these are budgeted numbers, these translate into the capital budget in terms of budget numbers. While I think those numbers are fairly close to what you'll see in the capital budget, based on what I've seen from staff so far and our dialogue about that, they, they could change at any time along the way, in any given year, we're updating the CIP. But this is our best estimate of what we know now for budgeting purposes. Okay. Ann, thirty-two sixteen.
Vice Mayor Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Ms. Hammeros-Grooms.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
And Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
Resolution thirty-four sixteen, yeah?
Authorizing the city manager...
Excuse me, you...
Whoop, hang on a second.
Were we going to discuss the naming?
Oh, the naming thing, I'm sorry, I skipped right past that. Our options are to have this kids' vote ballot?
Let me, let me go really quickly through this, just kind of summarize it for you. So the park naming policy, the origin of the names are typically from the geographic description or location of significant natural features, could be an historic name relative to the park or the facility, a Gaelic Celtic reference to either of those, or some kind of a, a name of a sponsor of the land or development at council's pleasure, but I don't know that this would, would qualify for that area. But these are the basic criteria for the origin of the actual name itself. The process could include one of two options, or three if council chooses a third, but one of those is the kids' vote, where council will refer this matter to the Community Service Advisory Commission, which was formerly the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. CSAC would then take the list of names, develop a list of names for council, and then solicit public input for developing that list of names, and then council formally approve the list that would go out to a kids' vote. So the kids of the community would actually vote for the actual name itself based on those recommendations from the community. And then it would go for city council for formal adoption. The other option is a general public naming procedure, very similar process, where the public would come up with the, we would send a notice out to the public soliciting nominations. Community Service Advisory Board would review those submissions and then make a formal recommendation to council, and then city council would certainly have the opportunity to adopt that recommendation, or choose its third option, which is council, at council's pleasure, they could name the park whatever it desires.
Are you familiar with the polar research vessel, Bodie McBoat Face?
Yes, this won't be Bridgie McBridge Face.
Same thing occurred to me, Amy, once.
Yeah, I mean, that's such a great story about, you know, I, I thought about Mr. Hammer Smith saying, you know, traffic engineering by public opinion is not a good way to do traffic engineering, and I'm thinking, you got to be careful what you wish for.
I think once you go down one of the paths, you're pretty well on it.
Right.
You're not going to change it, and so that gives me great reason to pause. I just want to make sure that we get a quality name for this and, and one that we put a lot of thought into collectively.
I, I guess what I was going to suggest, I don't know if it's different from what you're suggesting, was, and this is to start the conversation, but that we follow a, a general public naming procedure, you know, and that's open to everybody, and funnel that maybe through CSAC, and then obviously, we have, you know, council makes the final decision. I, I would certainly want to hear from, you know, staff as well.
Yeah, I, I would hope that if we'd go down that path, that we come, come up with several, several different options as opposed to one coming out of the good of the hole so that we're not stuck with a McMansion.
Bodie McBoat Face.
Yeah.
So like a guidance.
So basically, number two, man, that's what we're talking about, okay?
It says develop a list of names, it doesn't say recommend aid, but develop a list of names.
I was just afraid on a vote, that it's put up, and the number one vote is going to be the name, and I don't want to see that happen.
Yeah.
I agree.
So Matt, number two.
So just to be clear, then, CSAC will review all the submissions and make a formal recommendation of a list of names. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
But I will also provide you with the entire list, so you can...
Sure.
But to be clear, though, I don't want a recommendation from CSAC that just contains one name. I'd like to see...
A list of names.
Thank you.
And will the names be generated by just the public, or will staff be making suggestions? I know that, like, the Celtic names, I think Dari, for, for example, comes to mind, that was something that was staff, you know, came up with some, I'm sorry? Chichescu Park, yes.
Let's get something a little easier to pronounce this time.
Whatever council's pleasure is, I mean, if, if city council would like for us to put a, a draft list of names together...
I would.
To be seeking guidance from the community.
Throw it in there with the other names.
More options.
Let's see what we got. Okay?
You got your guidance there?
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, resolution thirty-four dash sixteen, Ann.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Washington Township to provide dispatching services for the Washington Township Fire Department.
Introduce it. Jay, Heinz, whoever, Jay?
Good evening, council, good to see you. Resolution thirty-four sixteen is authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement renewal with Washington Township for the purposes of providing dispatch and nine-one-one service, longstanding partnership with the township. This contract is proposed at a five percent escalator, which was an escalator clause that was included in the previous contract, that we are deciding to exercise with the agreement of the township. This is a one-year agreement as opposed to a three-year agreement. The parties came together and had a discussion about how to incorporate Washington Township and whether we should incorporate them in the funding formula, formula that we calculate for our other partners, recognizing that we have a unique partnership with Washington Township, they are our fire and EMS department, serving all of the same citizens that we serve, and we think the best course of action is to go ahead and enter into a one-year agreement with that five percent escalator clause while we continue to evaluate the overall level of service that we're providing to the township and what that cost entails. And with that, we're recommending approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Council questions?
I remember doing the very first one of these back in the eighties with Tim Hansley.
You're showing your age.
Long time ago.
This would be my fifth.
Ann?
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Hammeros-Grooms.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Staff comments, Dan?
Thank you, Jay.
Good evening, and just a few comments here. I wanted to point out a couple items that were in the, in the council packet for info only. Given that the, some of the discussion around the Nairop building last meeting, I wanted staff to go back and validate that we had had funding for the, for demolition of that building, really was supposed to have happened a couple of years ago. It didn't because we selfishly kept it for storage purposes relative to the Irish Festival. And I just want to remind everyone that it is our intention to take the building down, but we will preserve all of that natural setting around that, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear, unless there was some, something that council wanted to rethink about that. So before I moved out on, on doing that, I want to make sure we were all on the same sheet of music with that.
So how do we move forward with potential thoughts for the future use of that space?
I'm sorry, say it again.
How do we move forward with some thoughts or process for potential uses for that space once the building is gone?
Once the building is gone? Don't have any right now, other than just returning that to, to green space and making sure that the area behind it is not disrupted. So there's no plan for reusing that space right now.
Probably if you want to bring something forward, it would either be, probably be at CIP, if you wanted to have a discussion about a wildlife center or one of those things.
Something like that.
August would be the time to do that, in my view.
Gotcha, thank you.
Yeah, sooner we know that, those ideas, the better.
Yeah, or sooner, if you have ideas, so that it could be worked into the CIP if there was support.
I'll reach out to you, Dana.
Okay.
Thank you.
I also want to ensure that it doesn't become parking lot for the Irish Festival. You know, every year, I'm amazed at where people end up parking cars on our parkland, and that's all I'm going to say.
Okay. Point well taken. Just wanted to, to let everyone know that we did put an update in the packet regarding a council work session on June twentieth. Chair of the admin committee may want to address that later. I think we've got a draft agenda in there as well. There is a memo also regarding the International Friendship City Committee that we're suggesting that we, that we do. Just wanted some guidance from you, if, if what we proposed in that memo was okay, as a start, to keep that kind of as a working group, to be staffed by staff and supported by staff with the members that we listed here. And the one item in here is if you're okay with proceeding that direction, we would want a, a council, a member of council or a council, a council designee to sit on that working group, if you're so inclined to do that.
I'd like to do it. Any other volunteers? John, I know you want it. Amy, Tim, any takers?
I think it's the neat thing.
Chris?
No. It's all yours.
You want to do it, Mike?
I'm sorry.
You can do it together.
This, do you want to do that?
Friendship City.
Committee.
Maybe as an ex officio or something to show for, you know, occasionally, but, I mean, I was there at Masiko and met the folks, but no, by all means, I think I could show up at a meeting.
Yeah, would never be our intent to limit participation, but we'd like to have someone designated if you're, if you have the time and can do it. Okay, great. So I take that you're okay with this working group approach?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, we'll get moving on that, thank you. I also just want to take a moment to thank staff for the Citizen University. I want to thank, I wanted to thank publicly Christina Nardecchio, as well as Kyle Kreidler, who were really the driving forces at staff and logistics and planning and all that sort of thing, but also to thank all the other staff who participated in that, and they do take great pride in telling their story and sharing what they do, kind of the look behind the curtain. The feedback I've gotten from Citizen U, as you heard yourself, was very positive. If probably one thing we could do was more of them per year, but we'll look at that as we go down the road. And then the last thing I want to do, and I'm sure others of you may mention this, I just want to extend on behalf of staff, our condolences to the city of Hilliard for the loss of Officer Sean Johnson during a training accident last week. I want to thank Chief Heinz von Eckersberg and all of our staff and the police department for the untiring support that they've extended to the city of Hilliard, as we really look at that as certainly a fellow public servant who lost his life in the line of duty, but also it hits home more for our sworn officers who, who knew Sean personally and interacted with him, and so certainly our condolences to his family and to the community as a whole. And we'll be intricately involved in the funeral services and so forth tomorrow and the next day, and I want to thank the Dublin police officers who have gone to the city of Hilliard and provided backup support as they've tried to take a knee and regroup among themselves at the, as a result of losing one of their family members, so.
I really appreciated the, the correspondence, the emails back and forth with your help with Hilliard as well, stepping up for your brothers and sisters there on that department, so thanks for that. I know you stepped in right away, and thank you.
Heinz, I work with Albert Iosu, who's on Hilliard City Council, and Albert approached me and asked if I would just extend council's thank you to the support that Dublin has given to Hilliard. It's meant a lot to them. They feel very strongly that Dublin is a great neighbor with them, and so he was very moved and very touched by the support that your team has given to the city of Hilliard, so thank you.
That's all I have, thank you. Council roundtable, Chris? We'll go down here. Ladies? Oh, oh, committee reports, that's right.
P and Z, Amy.
P and Z, Amy?
We saw, heard a presentation the other night. We had a relatively light agenda, and it was on Echo Dublin, or Eco Dublin, and I said that I thought it would be really important for council to hear about the work. It's a staff working group of folks that are looking at sustainability issues, and it's, it sounds like a lot of exciting stuff, and I think it would be good for council to, to hear about that. Thank you.
Is that it?
That's it.
Administrative committee, Mike?
Yeah, just, we did have some discussion back and forth on CSAC. It would appear that we need to schedule a couple more interviews, so I think we're working on that, and you're going to work on that. Is that clear to everybody? Is that clear, everybody's on board with that? So I think we know who they are, we've identified who, who they are, and we'll wait to hear from you. And there was a suggestion that maybe we do it at the thirteenth meeting, but we do have a lengthy finance committee meeting at 5:30 prior to that, and it's probably going to take the whole hour and a half for that, so I don't know from a timing perspective, maybe, maybe even before the special meeting on the twentieth, the work session could possibly work as well. That's just some suggestions, but poll council and see what comes up there. Does anybody else have anything they want to add there? Okay? And then specifically, the June twentieth meeting is the work session, it's been addressed several times this evening. We'll have a presentation from O'Brien Atkins, the design team on the bridge, and we'll have what, some consultants and staff about some concepts with respect to John Schilt Parkway. So Dana and I talked about this, I think you talked to Mayor Peterson as well, and we thought those topics were timely, and I think we moved some things around, but that, that's probably going to be, that'll be the thrust of that meeting on the twentieth, correct?
Correct.
And that's all I have on, that's all I have on admin.
Finance?
Finance, once again, we do have the committee meeting on June thirteenth, it's going to really cover the nuts and bolts of employee benefits, it starts at 5:30 prior to our regular council meeting, and that will be a very detailed, comprehensive overview of, of employee benefits, where we are, where we potentially plan to be, and hopefully we'll have some more definition on the rules. Hopefully that'll be done, so that's all.
Thanks, Mike. Public Services Committee, Amy? Thank you. Tim, here we go with your lineup, Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission.
Well, as always, I would invite Dana to chime in, but I think the biggest takeaway from that meeting was the passage of the Conference of Transportation Plan, which is a big, big deal, and which, as earlier discussion pointed out, you know, sometimes, sometimes not, benefits Dublin. So anyway, anything else, Dana, takeaway? Okay. That's it on Morpsey.
Okay. Logan Union Champagne County Regional Planning Commission?
Nothing to report there.
U.S. Innovation Corridor Group?
We met last Friday, I think it was, I, I've lost track of time. It was one of the, either last Friday or the Friday before, but in any event, the biggest takeaway from that meeting was that the committee voted to approve the Crossroads Area, Area Plan with the significant distinction that the Jackman property was, was not agreed to. So I guess in essence, we agreed to disagree with respect to that part of the plan that showed significant multifamily, and which is the subject, at least currently, of a referendum. But the balance of the plan was approved by the committee, and then the next step would be to advance it to the participating jurisdictions, and I, I'm not aware of a timeline for that yet, so Dana?
No, I, I'm not aware of a timeline for the other jurisdictions, was hoping to bring something back to council in June, so I'll, I'll follow up with those jurisdictions and check their timing.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Dublin Arts Council, John?
Nothing to report, except for I hope everybody had a chance to go to the Bridging Time event, and I think that, I know the Dublin Arts Council wants to be involved in also possibly naming the, the River Park, because they're spending a lot of time actually evaluating the Bridge Street corridor, so it'd be interesting to see what they come up with. Thank you.
Thank you. Dublin Board of Education, Chris and Christina?
We have a meeting June fourteenth, so we have not met since we were last together.
I don't have anything to report on Washington Township. Now we go to roundtable, Chris?
Have a couple things. One, this report here about cemeteries and the amount of space we have left, and how we're rapidly running out of space in our cemetery. I was wondering if we have done any research on the other cemeteries that are located within the city and identified what opportunities there might be in those for spaces.
A long time ago, we took, and I just remember that when I used to have them, when we had the Cemetery Commission, we took a look at that. Because those are historic, we chose to never do any extension of, of burials into that, or open those up for that purpose.
One thing we found out, Dana, from the township days when they were in the township, was that we weren't even sure if the people were where they said they were.
Right.
And in fact, some of them were under roads. Ted Caltenback used to tell stories out at Cos Gray, that those, they just put the road right over top, and a lot of stories, so...
Yeah, I, well put, that's, thanks for going there, because that's the real answer, which is, it's factual, I appreciate that you said it that way, it's the bottom line, it's, we just don't want to go in there and touch, touch those because of that.
So do we have a plan to provide anything further, or what, what do we think we'll do?
I would only say that over the years, council has, has considered the idea of future other cemetery possibilities. I know we've looked at expansion adjacent to the existing one along Monterey, but the last, I believe the last guidance that we had was that this was going to be it for the cemetery business for the city, and just was never interested in looking beyond that for other future...
I've always been told, I've always been told in the city manager school, they're told that there's two things you stay away from, cemeteries and fire departments, so I think that's pretty accurate.
Yeah, council did study this, maybe Ann could get the minutes, I'm sure that it would be an easy search for you, I want to say like two thousand six, seven, eight timeframe. We talked about what we wanted to do, because we had the same problem, and then we added some sites back then, and then we added the Colombarium, and I, I think at that point in time, we said we wanted to stop being in the cemetery business for a number of reasons, but maybe Ann could resurrect that, and if there's interest to talk further about it, but we did do a pretty intensive discussion about the fact that we were running out of space and...
I, I hope that we don't get in the habit of saying, well, we already made that decision. I think we should, you know, as things come up, that we possibly look at the...
Well, I certainly would.
Another question I had was, several weeks ago, we had some folks come in here about paving of roadways within the cemetery. And because this memo was in our packet, it brought that to the forefront of my mind again, and I wanted to see where we might be with respect to that.
Right, so I've asked engineering staff to look at not just paving, but other types, other options. I actually had a discussion with Mr. Richards, who was one of the residents who brought that forward at a previous meeting, caught him in this building after a historical society meeting and spoke to him at length about it, and let him know that we were working through some options that we had not forgotten and were continuing to work it. And then just this last week, at the meeting with the historic Dublin residents' businesses, Historical Society was represented there, I brought up this as a, as something that had been brought forward, and that, that we were looking at those alternatives, and that we needed to probably advance that with some dialogue with, with members of the historic district, and in particular, I wanted to include some input from the Historical Society as we went down that process, and before we formulated a recommendation and came back to city council. So I would probably give it another, probably sixty days, I think. Do you think that's reasonable, Megan, to, to come back with and finish that analysis? Okay, yeah, and then that would be incorporated with CIP process.
Thank you, appreciate that. And Megan, wanted to thank you for the Zika virus information, the entomologist in me found it fascinating. It's going to be a really interesting season with respect to that, and I'm glad to see that we're thinking about it ahead of time, because I have a feeling it'll be too late by the time we, by the time we have all of the information, it'll be too late to react. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Christina?
I just have two things. Again, I wanted to extend my thanks to the folks that were, that joined the Citizen U class, I got to go to two of their sessions, and they are clearly a group of very educated folks who really care a lot about Dublin, have no issue asking tough questions, but it was fun, so I really enjoyed it. So the second thing is, I want to actually congratulate a Dublin teacher, Ashley Doolan Smith is a environmental science teacher at Dublin Jerome, and her science class is making a difference to help keep Dublin greener and further Dublin's support of both environment and education. Ms. Doolan Smith learned about vermicomposting when she came to a Swaco-led Metro Parks class, she took her class there. She took what she learned, and she took it back to the classroom and kind of took it four or five steps further. She found some corporate sponsors in the Brickman Group, Straters and Kurtz, to help her and her students build raised gardens at Jerome. The students used food waste from their homes, that they brought from their homes, and from their global gourmet class to Jerome and allowed the worms to, you know, do their magic, and the result was compost that they could use to fertilize their new garden. Ms. Doolan Smith and her students didn't stop there, the students are researching ways to preserve the veggies that they grow. Their director of nutritional services also got involved, and they want to use some of the veggies that the students grow in the cafeteria, which I think is great, students feeding students. Any surplus that they have, they'll donate to the local food pantry. To date, the students have composted three hundred pounds of food waste, so it's three hundred pounds of food waste that otherwise would have gone to the landfill, which I just think is phenomenal, and, and that really showcases the Dublin difference and, and how Dublin grows thinkers, partners, and just caring human beings. So congratulations to that class, what I passed out to you was Ashley's email that she sent me, and some pictures of the kids as they were building the garden, and then the final picture is of just the garden itself. Anyway, I just wanted to share that, because I just thought it was superb, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Christina. Mike?
Just real quickly, just want to recognize the former mayor, Jack Frambyes, and he had passed away last week, and the funeral service was Saturday. I know that, Ann, you probably followed up with some flowers from council, and anyway, just wanted to recognize him.
Thanks, Mike. I do want to point out that Michelle Crandall was able to represent us at the, at the visitation and presented the proclamation there.
Amy? Is that it? Mike's it?
It's ten PM, I have nothing, thank you so much.
Tip?
Ditto.
John?
I have to congratulate you on, I think this says it all about Dublin, your new brand redefined, it says, maybe it's not the luck of the Irish, maybe it's all really well planned, and I think it sums up forty years of history. Mike, I did have the honor of attending Jack Frambyes's funeral, and I want to share with you the, that his wife told me that she wanted to thank city council for the proclamation, for the flowers, and for all the kind words, and he was a extraordinary civil servant, he was a past mayor of Dublin, he was in the fire department, he was a military veteran from the Korean conflicts period, and I think he spent his whole life advocating the common good of everybody else. He had a very unique personality, and I think that's why everybody loved him, he sort of, he didn't live his life in a guarded state, he sort of had that attitude, that life wasn't a dress rehearsal, you know, go live it, and Jack did, and his family came from Bavaria, and his last day was spent in Passau, which is Bavaria, and so, Jack, we, the citizens of Dublin salute you and send our condolences and prayers to your family, thank you.
Well said.
Anything else, John?
That's it.
And with that, we are adjourned.